Barbara Marshman?
Here.
Christina Johnson?
Here.
Elizabeth Monley?
Here.
Ellie Matsumura?
Here.
Enrico Calender? Frank Madski?
Here.
Eric Percival? George Sanchez?
Here.
Hui Tran?
Here.
Jeremy Berus?
Here.
Jose Pesadas?
Here.
Lund Diop? Linda Lozot? Luis Barosio?
Here.
Magnolia Segal?
Present.
Maria Fuentes? Sammy Rubleto?
Here.
Cherry Segura? T Chan? Tobin Gilman?
Here.
Veronica Amador? Oh, I see you're possibly in attendees. For a moment, Yong Jao?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Could you move our first speaker over from the attendees? Matthew Gonzer?
Yes, he's over.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the public and members of the commission. Tonight, we have a study session on a number of very important topics. We appreciate the subcommittee working to get all these speakers in line for us to be able to hear from tonight. I'm going to try to keep us on a timely fashion. Some of our speakers are time certain, so I'm going to keep us moving through. Our first speaker does have a hard stop tonight at six, so we want to get started right away to ask our speaker to have fifteen minutes, and then we have fifteen minutes for commissioners' questions and answers. So we're going to invite Matthew Gonzer, the Chief Resilience Officer and Executive Director of the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency for the City and County of Honolulu, who was with us this evening, to be able to begin the presentations. I would remind the public that this is one item of the study session, and so we will have the public comment at the end of all the speakers. And so this first speaker will begin, and welcome, Mr. Gonzer, and thank you for joining us.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. We'll give you your time now. Thanks for coming.
Sure. Yes. Aloha. Good evening. Good afternoon. My name is Matt Gonzer. I currently serve as the Chief Resilience Officer and Executive Director for the City and County of Honolulu's Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. However, I was asked to discuss here with you all sort of the origins and the sort of process by which the city's Climate Change Commission was affected and initiated. And I do have some questions that I'm happy to just go through here. I don't have presentation materials, and then hopefully I still have some time for questions and answers. Firstly, just, you know, congratulations to you all for even being at this point in time. We have a similar process by which we're able to consider our city charter, and that's the story here this evening. It's on a ten-year process. There are ways to amend it in between. But in the 2015-2016 cycle, there was a whole variety of proposals to amend the city's charter. And one of them, one of the twenty that were ultimately on the ballot for that 2016 election was, should we, the city, establish an Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency? And overwhelmingly, at least in terms of the voting population, the voters elected to establish that office. And as part of the creation of that office, it also stood up an independent climate change commission. So myself, as the director for the office, we provide administrative support, and the body itself is administratively attached to our office. However, they are all volunteer commissioners appointed by the mayor, confirmed by our city council, and they operate independently. And their role and responsibility is to provide guidance and serve in an advisory role. They are to gather the latest science and bring that information to bear for our office, administration, and our legislative body, the city council. They are a five-member commission, and the only sort of qualification defined within city charter is that they are members with expertise in climate change in Hawaii. And they have staggered five-year terms. Several of them have already been reappointed. This body only held its first meeting in February of 2018. And actually, just two months ago, did we have the first turnover in one of the members. The commission itself is currently made up of really experts in the fields of climate sciences and the built environment here in the state. Three of them are University of Hawaii professors. One of them is an East-West fellow researcher, or an East-West center researcher, who is actually the lead editor for our local contributions to the National Climate Assessment. And then we're very fortunate in the only person who comes from private industry was previously an architect, and now the new commissioner, who has been appointed up to that position, also is an architect herself, recognizing that at least within our emissions inventory, greenhouse gas emissions inventory, buildings and the energy and electricity used within those buildings is a significant portion of our greenhouse gas pollution. The wisdom at the time when the first commission was established was to have a spread of expertise and disciplines. We're fortunate that we have an economist and an urban planner. We have a water resource hydrologist. We have a she's really a microbiologist, but she also brings the extremely important perspectives around native Hawaiian culture and customary and traditional practices. That architect that I mentioned, oh, gosh, now I'm blanking, and the lead coastal geologist and the individual whose team has developed all of our sea level rise and coastal hazard information, and actually the data that is now part of the National Sea Level Rise Viewer. So again, there's nothing that defines that makeup of the commission. It's just sort of the good wisdom to nominate those that are really essential to bring us that honest truth about the realities of what we are facing, what's already been measured here locally, what's very likely to impact us in the near term, and then some of the things that we certainly need to keep a forward-looking eye on over the horizon. And to address some of the other questions here, again, they serve as an advisory body. They are only obligated to meet twice a year. They themselves are extremely motivated and proactive individuals, and on average, the past three years have met nine times each year. And they have produced some really essential and foundational guidance documents and/or white papers across a whole variety of topics that now are additional inputs to support us in taking action to implement things, whether it be to address climate change emissions, to address some revisions to our special management area and coastal management practices in terms of shoreline setbacks, et cetera, as well as informing some really important considerations around social equity and climate change, and how do we make sure that we are addressing both in lockstep? And I think maybe what I really left off in terms of the origin of even why the question was on the charter within the Charter Commission's considerations at that point in time in 2015, 2016, was just a sheer recognition of things that people have already experienced. You know, we have a long history of observational and cultural awareness here across the state and on this island of Oahu. People live in places for a long time, and they've seen and witnessed the change. They generally understand our sheer geographic vulnerability, and they also recognize that there's much more that we need to do to ensure that we are preparing communities for the future. When change is coming to your literal shoreline, the no-action alternative isn't really an option anymore. So they certainly view this as an opportunity to bring some really specific and renewed focus and attention to coordinate across agencies with the work bolstered by this independent volunteer body, which is the Climate Change Commission. Let me see if I missed anything. I think for the most part, that sums up sort of the big, broad picture that I wanted to share with you all tonight, except that the only thing that has really evolved since that charter, the establishment of the commission in the charter, is an ordinance that passed at the end of last year that just further articulated my office's responsibilities to administratively support them. And it further defined that now the ask is that they meet at minimum quarterly unless a meeting is deemed unnecessary by the by majority of the commissioners, and frankly, I don't see them slowing down anytime soon, which is a real recognition of all the things that we're concerned about today and all the impacts that we need to keep the pedal to the metal to prepare community for. So again, their sole responsibility, as defined in charters, to gather the latest science and information and climate change effects in the city and provide advice to the executive, the mayor, the council, city agencies, and departments. So I'll pause there and return it back to you, Chair, and happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzer. We'll go to our commissioners, Commissioner Marshman, then Commissioner Segal.
Thank you. Two questions, really. You might have answered one a few minutes ago. I was curious how the commission has changed policy, if it has changed policy at all, other than refining your duties and so on. I realize it hasn't been very long. And also, what is their approach to trying to encourage or guard social equity?
Yeah, great question. So again, they do serve as an advisory body. They provide direct when they come out with a guidance document or a white paper, it's delivered formally to the mayor and the administration, including myself and all the departments. One thing in particular, their two first documents were really a digest in terms of it's called the Climate Change Brief, so downscaling and gathering all of the latest really at the statewide scale. We're a small island out here, so in terms of data, the accuracy can be wanting at times. But with that Climate Change Brief that looked at, you know, twelve or thirteen climate change impacts of concern, followed up with a seal of rise guidance document in terms of how to consider, incorporate, and use different thresholds for planning. Those two documents didn't translate into ordinance, but they, a month later, turned into a mayor's directive, which has been guiding a lot of our city agency work and how we continue to coordinate and/or potentially annoy because we're a little pushy in terms of how we get the information out so that we are being honest and transparent and communicating back out to the public that we understand the risks and that we are taking action to address them while simultaneously taking the steps to eliminate the drivers of climate change and the things that are forcing us to continue to prepare for a climate changed future. Some of the other guidance documents, now several years on, have started to provide additional inputs into ordinance changes. One in particular is specific guidance around our shoreline setback ordinance, which now the Department of Planning and Permitting is leading. And again, some of the strong recommendations from the commission have informed and are being incorporated. But it's not an immediate. It certainly brings and sheds a very important light. And again, the fact that they have open public meetings, sunshine, you know, agendized meetings, and their ability to convene and bring speakers while also providing a space for community members to get educated and informed about it has really proved very important for a whole variety of things in terms of education and building constituencies for change.
Thank you. Commissioner Segal, followed by Commissioner Gilman.
Hi, just a couple of questions. So the first is, you mentioned they only have to meet four times a year, but how often do they meet? Is that nine times a year that they actually meet just because they think it's so important?
Yeah, on average, they've been averaging about nine meetings a year, just because they're motivated. They want to bring speakers. They want to, even for ourselves, they bring outside guests from insurance agencies, from other municipalities. It's been a great forum to shed light on a variety of issues.
Okay. Next question is, why have you decided, why was there a decision to make a change in the charter rather than just keeping the Climate Action Commission on a policy level? Why was it a charter change? Why was that commission elevated to?
Yeah, the commission did not exist before, and apologies if I was unclear about that in the beginning. It was actually the charter amendment that even triggered and obligated the establishment of a commission.
And why? Why, why, why in the charter? What was the discussion and thinking around that?
These bodies, whether it's the Planning Commission, the Liquor Commission, the Police Commission, they all exist within the structure, the formal, you know, the sort of the constitution of local government, in this case, through the charter. Subsequent commissions that have come to be include a youth commission that just started up this year and was voted upon last year. So that's really the only way to formalize it in our structure.
Okay. And then lastly, how do you engage the youth in the community to partake in what the commission is doing, the Climate Action Commission?
Yeah, so with the Climate Change Commission, you know, we administratively, we do all the mechanisms and the logistics in terms of making sure that the timing is met and it's posted and public notice is given. We have our own newsletter. There's an additional distribution list that people can subscribe to to stay informed about what the commission is up to or when the next meeting is scheduled. So beyond sort of the extension of the information, again, we don't, we don't staff and we don't necessarily, you know, they don't guide us. We don't necessarily guide. you know, they don't guide us. We don't necessarily guide them, but we benefit from their engagement. So I think one of the other exciting things, as I just mentioned, is we now actually do have a youth commission that was established in charter. And I, I see that as an, as a really great opportunity to bridge what this commission is thinking along the lines of what that commission might want to take on in terms of a, a topic area.
I'm sorry. Now I said it was the last one, but just very quickly, are you guys, are, are you going towards zero fossil fuels? Is that part of the goal?
So unrelated to the commission, we have in state law and city law, a 100% renewable energy law by no later than 2045. And we have our own climate action plan that city council adopted just in June of this year, and we're obligated to update that plan every five years.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilman followed by Commissioner Matsumura.
Hi. I imagine there are state level agencies and commissions that focus on a lot of these same, these same issues. And I'm just curious, is there much synergy, coordination, cross pollination between the City of Honolulu's commission and state level agencies or commissions?
Yeah, that's a great question. The state has a state climate change mitigation and adaptation commission. It's structured very, very differently. That was established through state legislation several years ago. And it is not made up in the same way that this is a volunteer body of experts in the fields of climate science. That state commission prescribed in legislation really just identifies the directors of state agencies. And then the counties, we only have four counties across the state. The counties participate through their directors of their planning departments or their designee. So it's, it's really, it's, you know, that body itself could turn over more frequently just as positions come and go. It's not charged with the same kind of information, but it provides an additional opportunity to make sort of, to, to, to make policy statements that then ultimately could drive, say, what the state legislature does or what any of the state operating agencies ultimately do. The last confusing thing about that state commission is not only is it executive level department directors, it actually includes several state legislators that are heads of specific committees, like we have a, a water and land committee, we have an energy committee. So it, it is this somewhat confusing bridging of the legislative and the executive bodies. And they've had different sort of challenges and successes as a result of that makeup.
Thank you. Commissioner Matsumura.
Thank you. And my apologies to the speakers, public and my colleagues for being off camera. My computer is again not able to be on Zoom and take notes at the same time. Thank you so much for, for being here with us. And I had a couple of questions. One is if you could share a little bit more about what the, the changes were by ordinance to the relationship between the commission and the office? And I, did I understand right that your office existed before the commission? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Both the office and the commission came into existence at the same charter.
So much.
So within the charter, which is primarily about our office, frankly, there is a section that says convene a climate change commission.
Yeah. So just whatever you can share about sort of the respective roles and, and to the extent you're comfortable speculating how it's different to have, you know, both a commission and an office versus just one or the other. Also, you know, Commissioner Marshman had asked earlier about the sort of equity dimensions of your work. So, so I'll just bump that question if you're able to address it as well.
Yeah, great. Your first question about sort of how it evolved from the charter section to that, what I mentioned, that ordinance at the end of last year, very, very nominally, the only change really is that charter said must meet no less than two times. The ordinance now says at a minimum meet quarterly, unless they deem it's, it's unnecessary, but presumably still no fewer than twice a year. So that, that's the only real change. I think just a, a desire to make sure that they're, they're staying relevant and using it as an opportunity to bring people together to keep talking about the, the issues. And they do squarely and independently serve as an advisory body, but they can bring a lot of attention and perspective again, through their meetings, plus through their outputs on any specific area. And then lastly, to that question about, you know, the commission's interest in climate change and social equity, and then how does that translate to our work? Part of the production of some of their white papers, typically they have, you know, two of the five commissioners in a lead writing role, and they've set up a good model of sort of a difficult now in, in COVID times and everything being remote, but a bit of a roadshow and stakeholder engagement. And then since we sort of ministry administratively support their work, we've been part of some of the agenda and facilitation on any of the themes, one of which was climate change and social equity. And now we're wrapping in a lot of, not only did they as a commission take a stance and sort of proclaim their commitment to it in terms of how they execute their own meetings, but also now we are carrying forward some of the guidance and incorporating it into our agency's work through a climate action plan, our climate adaptation strategy, which is called Climate Ready Oahu, and then how we coordinate and try to effectuate important positive and systemic change across the city enterprise.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Well, Matt, thank you for, Commissioner Swaytran.
A few clarifying questions. So you mentioned that the, your, the commission was created as part of the main, the language in the charter that's really focused on your department. Does the commission work with any other city department?
They have, they have the power to convene, so they have invited over time all the agencies. We had a new mayor and administration at the start of this year. They brought in the managing director. Again, they use it as a forum to ask specific questions to get, it's a little bit outreach and inreach where, you know, what are the things that we have questions about? What are the, the topics that, to, I believe Commissioner Matsumura's question of like, you know, why both an office and a commission? Well, like, again, these are experts in the fields of climate science and the built environment. They, they have access to a lot of other information that we don't have. So then how do we translate or how do they help us understand that information to then execute on the work and like bring it to bear for community and decision-making processes? But in terms of like the relationships between any city agency and the commission, besides that it is a resource, there isn't one. So we, again, we just provide the administrative and logistics support. They're not a decision-making body. And that's probably an overstatement, whereas like our planning commission has a much more direct relationship with our Department of Planning and Permitting in terms of thinking about proposals for new ordinances and, and things within their purview. Where like the Police Commission has the authority to hire and fire a police commissioner. This body, the Climate Change Commission, does not have any of those specific roles and responsibilities. They've served, yeah.
Okay. And, and to clarify, so you mentioned that, and I want to clarify this because it's maybe a little bit different to San Jose structure. But all commissions in your city have to be chartered? Is that right or no?
Without sort of me misrepresenting, that's, that's my understanding. And sort of flipping through the charter right now, it, it looks like that most of the commissions exist in a section of the charter or within a section of a department's roles and responsibilities to administratively support. I don't want to misrepresent and showing a little bit of my own civics naivete here. But that's, that's certainly how these commissions have come to be in my recent memory.
Okay. And, and then, and also is there a budget? Does the commission have an independent budget or does it rely only on your, on your, on your department budget?
Yeah, they, they don't have a budget. They volunteer. There's some nominal expense coverage for things like parking and transportation, should that come to be. But no, there is no independent research budget. There's no staffing or, or other budget. We've been fortunate to partner and piggyback off of some of their own independent UH resources or some, we, we just chip in with a lot of staff time as well, especially on the notes.
Commissioner Gilman, you have one minute.
Just curious, what's the headcount for your staff?
We are, when fully staffed, we are a team of 12, but we fortunately have an array of AmeriCorps Vistas additionally stationed within our office, but that program is time bound. So we're currently about 20 for the near term.
And Matt, we said,
Not enough.
Yeah. We said we get you out at six. We had a hard stop and it is six o'clock. So I thank the commissioners for their good, quick questions. And Matt, thanks so much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your, your input. It's going to be really helpful to us as we move forward.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'm, I'm available post for any emails. I could follow up with links to our commission just for your own reading and awareness as well.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Our next speaker is here, I believe. Yes, I saw him on. This next, we're switching topics now and we're going to go to Measure G and the limitations of the San Jose Independent Police Auditor. Our guest this evening is Siobhan Nurey, San Jose Office of the Independent Police Officer, auditor, police auditor. We're going to ask, we have a 20-minute slot set up for Siobhan to speak first, and then we will have 20 minutes for Q and A from commissioners. So welcome, Siobhan, and thank you so much for joining us this evening. And I'll turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I, I've already met with some of the people on your subcommittee and given them a fuller explanation about my office, the history of my office, what we do, what we can't do. But I was asked specifically tonight to talk about recent changes to our office, mostly Measure G and also a side letter because I'm, I think that changes are in, people don't have clarity about what, what recent developments have meant for the office. So I'm going to try to share my screen. I sometimes don't have success with this, so I'm just going to give it a try. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So this, this current page comes from my 2019 annual report. And it, and it gives kind of an overview of what we do. We were created in 1993 by ordinance. And then in 1996, the voters moved to, to place our office into the city charter. But ever since our creation, we have been an auditor forum of police oversight, which means we do not investigate. We don't have any investigatory powers. All investigatory powers rest with the Internal Affairs Department of the Police Department. And you can see those in the boxes on the side here. So we review investigations completed by the IA unit for four things. We want to make sure they're fair, thorough, complete and objective. So over the course of the last several years, there has been some, there was some discussion about expanding our powers. Initially, Judge Cordell indicated why we only look at citizen initiated complaints, thereby precluding our scrutiny from investigations filed by the department against its own members. And later Walter Katz came and said, well, why would we do a charter amendment with all the, you know, the bureaucratic hoops and cost involved if we're not asking for a little bit more than that? So there was back and forth between the city and the police department, the police union, not our office, about some expansion of our duties. And this was Measure G. So Measure G made some changes. We, we are able to continue to review complaints filed by the community, but we are also able to review investigations initiated by the department. And this is basically what we do. An individual contacts our office or internal affairs and makes a complaint. The complaint gets classified on its level of severity or importance. IA investigates while we monitor that investigation. IA completes its investigation and sends it to us. And we're going to look at, determine whether it's fair, thorough or complete. If we disagree, we can move an appeal process up firstly to the IA commander. Second level is to the chief of police and the third level is the city manager. And this only involves non-criminal issues. Criminal issues are decided by the criminal part of the internal affairs unit. If criminal charges are filed, those charges are filed by the district attorney. Generally, if those charges move forward, then officers probably facing suspension or termination. If not, the department itself will then look at the evidence that the DA rejected to file to determine whether a administrative complaint should be filed against the officer. That then is also looked at by our office. So this is again what we do. What we look for is was the investigation timely? Does the investigation adequately reflect the complaint's concerns? Were interviews conducted that were necessary? They look at body worn camera. Was the analysis thorough and objective? We still do that today, but as you can see, there's no investigatory steps in this, in what we look for. So what Measure G did is they made a number of changes to our office. Number one, we're able to again, look at investigations the department initiates against its own officers. We are able to look at police records relating to officer involved shootings and use of force incidents that result in death, even if a complaint has not been filed. So a number of years ago, the Senate, I mean, the California Legislature passed SB 1421, which allows members of the public to also look at these very same records. But those will be redacted. Our review of these records are related to making policy recommendations. And number three, we can look at unredacted, we can look at redacted police reports to make recommendations. Number four is probably really the most important is that the city council can change our duties without requiring a vote as long as it conforms with what is in the charter. And that nuance is pretty important. And then we, to make any changes, we would need to meet and confer with the police union. So if you're looking at, like if you're looking at charter issues, you know, in other jurisdictions, the police auditor is able to look at and have access to a variety of records without moving through the steps that I need to do to look at records. So under Measure G, and I think I put this in the outline, in the memo from the city manager to the council. So in order to gain records, there are four steps. The records that I seek must be related to a topic that is the subject of a complaint. The records that are sought by the auditor must be directly related to a topic that is part of a work plan submitted to council and approved by council. All the records shall be redacted. And any recommendations that the IPA makes based on the records will be reviewed by the city manager, the chief of police, the city attorney and council, if appropriate, in closed session before disclosure. So those are the four steps that I need to go to in order to look at records. This was, you know, negotiated with a side letter with the POA. They agreed to these terms to place it on the ballot. I think you've already been informed of the need to obtain to a certain extent that the unions acquiescence to some of these items. But I just want to say in contrast, if you look at the, if you look at the the city auditor's description in the charter, it states the city auditor shall have access to and authority to examine any and all documents, including but not limited to books, accounts, internal memorandum, writings, tapes, reports, vouchers, correspondence files and other records, bank accounts, money or other property of any city department, officer or agency, whether created by the charter or otherwise, with the exception of any elected official. whether created by the charter or otherwise, with the exception of any elected official. So it's pretty apparent that, you know, the city auditor gets access and ready access to a whole host of things without qualification. Um, but Measure G did allow us to get some records with qualifications. Uh, I think uh an important thing for the Charter Commission to consider is if if a charter change is necessary to allow us access to more records, it would have to be a charter change because the current limitations are in the current charter. And lastly, I just want to um let people know about a side letter. It's a one-year pilot project. Under the side letter, our office is able to do more things during the investigation of a complaint. Number one is we can ask a direct question of an officer, which heretofore we were not able to. Um, there's a certain timeline in which those complaints must come to our office. And we can also ask internal affairs to do other things, like we can direct that an officer be in um interviewed. We can direct that additional allegations be add basic based on what we see in the body worn camera. So these are for one year only. Uh, these again are not in the charter, they're not in the ordinance, and they did not greatly um, you know, expand any investigatory powers we have. Internal Affairs still does the investigations. Um, so I'm going to leave it at that to provide you the opportunity for questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, questions? Mr. Segal.
Hi, and thank you so much for being here. Um, can you kindly explain to us what is Police Internal Affairs? For those of us that don't know, when you say internal affairs, what does that mean, Police Internal Affairs? And so there, so the police is the only one investigating the police officer. There's no other external independent investigator. Um, and then also, why is it a problem that the documents that come to you are redacted? And what does redacted mean?
So the the first question is, what is Internal Affairs? Um, Internal Affairs is um a unit that is present in most law enforcement agencies statewide and nationwide. It is that unit of the department that investigates whether officers have engaged in misconduct. Most Internal Affairs units are um filled with investigators who are themselves employees and officers of the department. They look at generally, there are two units, at least in California, uh, because there's a pretty critical line between criminal investigations and administrative investigations. Criminal investigations determine whether or not officer has broken a criminal law. It's usually a penal code section, or it could be a vehicle code section, or a health and safety code section. Um, so they have a certain designated officers looking at criminal conduct. If they determine the threshold has been met, they will send along the investigation to the local District Attorney. Administrative investigations determine whether or not officers have or have not complied with um mostly the duty manual section, city policies, and the law. Um, in general, um, at least until recently, all Internal Affairs investigations have been confidential, um, open to the public only through a court process, uh, in which a judge reviews um records in a closed hearing. This is unlike a lot of other states across the nation. Um, although California is seen as liberal in some aspects, it is one of the most restrictive states uh in terms of this particular confidentiality. Um, generally, in most um law enforcement agencies, um, the Internal Affairs investigation, if it finds that misconduct has occurred, they will move up the case to higher levels, uh, who will probably take a different look, another look at whether or not they feel the uh the investigation was thorough, and also then to determine um what, if any, the level of discipline should be. Um, under our current um code and charter, um, this, the Chief of Police has a lot of say in what that discipline is. Um, but definitely, um, generally, it's the City Manager who determines what the uh level of discipline will be. Um, that's generally deferred back to the police chief, and he and he or she acts in concert with the Office of Employee Relations and Human Affairs to make sure that there's uniform discipline. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, your other question was?
Thank you. Um, just in terms of um things that are, the documents that you do get, they're all redacted.
Yeah.
What does it mean to be redacted? And also, what if somebody um dies or has great bodily injury, but they don't have any relatives to report it to you? Does death trigger an automatic review by you like it does in San Diego? San Diego's Paul Parker said, you know, there's many things in his county that just trigger automatic review, like death. You don't have to have some, somebody having a living relative to make that. It just becomes an automatic trigger for an investigation. So if you could talk about what redacted means, and do you have things that automatically trigger you to investigate?
We currently have nothing that triggers an automatic investigation. The uh, if there is an officer-involved incident, there is a panel convened by the uh, the Police Department in which my office participates. It's limited to determining whether or not uh training immediately needs to be changed, or whether additional uh equipment needs to immediately be obtained, but it does not look at whether the conduct of the officer was in or out of policy. So we do participate in that, and that is automatic ninety days post the incident. Um, the only automatic thing we has is if if a thing, uh, if an incident qualifies under this SB fourteen twenty-one because of death from serious bodily injury, we are able to access those records if we wish. Um, those are not redacted. Um, in my estimation, working with redacted records is um is cumbersome. Uh, number one, the department has to go through and redact everything. And then number two, as you're moving through the reports, it's sometimes hard to figure out which officer is taking what actions if all their names are redacted. And similarly, if all the names of um witnesses, suspects, other parties are redacted, we don't know which officer is engaging in what contact with whom and the resulting action or outcome. It just makes it a very, very cumbersome.
Thank you. Commissioner Bruce.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, my question was answered. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Monley.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it it um, as I recall, the Office of the Independent Police Officer was established in order to make sure that the public had a good view of what is actually going on and uh in within the department and um and actually to prevent uh the um the hiding of uh things that could uh embarrass the department or the city uh the city at large. Um, so I'm wondering if the City Council can just suddenly change your duties. How independent are you really? And how how loud is your voice?
Well, I think to a certain extent, allowing our duties to be changed by the City Council is a more nimble way to approach us taking on things that are that are in the immediate public interest. Um, instead of waiting for years or or more than years to to extend those powers. Um, you're correct that while they could also um direct me to do certain things, they could direct us not to do other things. So it is a a bit of a double-edged sword. But since we still exist in the charter, uh, I don't think they'd be able to do away with the office altogether. And in the charter, um, I'm given the role of being independent. So you know, I could to a certain extent raise the concerns that the um the City Council is somehow squelching my duties for a purpose that may not be one hundred percent appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, Commissioner Monley, do a follow-up? And then Commissioner Quaitran, followed by Commissioner Vice Chair Johnson.
Okay, um, you know, we have received presentations about different methods of accountability that can be implemented. Uh, you did miss the favor here for for getting records unredacted, but on a broader level, uh, do you have an opinion as to whether you would be that more effective if you actually took on uh the ability to conduct investigations on your own?
I personally think that um investigations of police misconduct should be conducted by somebody other than the police officers themselves. Um, for a variety of reasons, I think you would have investigations that are more um fair, thorough, and complete. Um, I think it's difficult for officers to investigate other officers, given the fact that once they leave Internal Affairs, they will be going out and having to be side by side with an officer whom they might have made a sustained finding against. Um, I also think that officers make assumptions that other officers will comport themselves with what the investigating officer believes he or she would do in the same situation. We see this on quite a bit in terms of, you know, pat searching or, well, pat searching comes to mind because um, we do see some cases in which the the um subject officer, you know, takes an action and the investigating officer just assumes, well, you know, he his assessment that the off- that the suspect was armed or dangerous is, you know, is totally valid and should be um examined or questioned. It's the lack of actually, you know, taking a probing, questioning approach to the officer's conduct versus making assumptions that officers act within the duty manual without clear evidence to show otherwise. And currently, the setup is that um officers and sergeants rotate in and out of Internal Affairs. They are generally there for only two years. In my estimation, um, it, to be a good investigator, you need at least a year in the role. And um, so you 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 learn your skills, you hone your skills, you become a good investigator, and then after a year, you're gone. So there's a constant cycle of relatively um inexperienced officers and sergeants conducting these investigations. Thus, thus, based on those grounds, I think it would be better for another entity, whether it's my office or in a separate agency, to do the investigations.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson, and followed by Commissioner Pizales.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. Um, how many people are on your staff, and what is their background to qualify them to be on your staff?
So we currently have six persons on my staff. Um, the by, I believe by council direction, the top of the office must be an attorney in good standing. Um, I have, my second-in-command is also an attorney. Um, attorneys are generally good because there is a lot of procedural um law that needs to be looked at, both criminal criminal process, constitutional law, and then you get into the minutia of things like landlord tenant disputes or sexual battery or um health and safety codes. So so two of us are attorneys. Uh, another person um has a background in um doing doing background work for various um agencies. And also, she then worked on the implementation of the bodyboard camera in the department and then moved over and was working at City Hall, looking at writing and making sure that agency memos were, you know, proper in proper format, uh, clear conclusions, stuff like that. Another one of my staff is, I was at um computers and statistics. Um, she doesn't have a law or police background, but her background in statistics is vital for us to prepare our annual reports. Um, another person in office comes from the community. She worked for a long time at various agencies such as uh, I think Fly and um, I'm not sure what else, but she she's our outlet to the community, and she has uh, she's instrumental in helping us to outreach. And then the the final person on my staff is a person who had worked at the City Hall for a while and then come over to us. She basically answers phones and sets up our files and makes sure that um cases that are closed uh show up so that we can review them.
Then my last question was, um, can you tell us what is preponderant standard?
Okay, so generally, both in um in civil and criminal law, and also, um, this is both state and federal, there there are various standards that are used to to just to determine whether or not the party prevails. And a lot of that has to do also with who has the burden. So if we look at criminal law, generally to get a conviction, the burden is on the prosecutor to provide evidence that the crime was committed, and this evidence needs to be pretty compelling. It needs to be beyond a reasonable doubt. That's the highest standard. The next standard in law generally recognized is clear and convincing, which is less than beyond a reasonable doubt, but not as um not as, but would, but it's higher than the next level down, which is preponderance of evidence. And that means something is more likely or not to have happened. It doesn't have to be a lot. It just has to be enough to convince the person who's looking at the facts that the fact occurred or did not occur.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Pizales.
Hello, you've mentioned Senate Bill um fourteen twenty-one. I was curious, what what has been the response from the department when those types of um public records requests are made? Thank you.
Well, it's kind of hard for me to project onto the department, and I'm going to sidestep this a little bit. I I do know that fourteen twenty-one um involves a a lot of records. Because initially, when it passed, it applied to about six years of data. So six years of um any incident involving a gun that resulted in injury or death, and any case involving um use of force that resulted in great bodily injury. So they had to go through all their reports and figure out which which cases would actually this apply to. And then they have to go through and um redact. So I've heard uh through newspaper accounts that they are not, have not been as quick as the public um had anticipated. Um, I think through the police reform um efforts, they are, you know, looking at ways to uh more automate uh the process. Um, but that would probably have a question better posed to the department. And on that point, I'd also like to say that um there are current um measures moving through the legislature right now that might expand um the reach of fourteen twenty-one to other cases.
Commissioner Mansky.
Yes, thank you, and I'll try to be brief. I have a few issues I'd like to to ask a few questions. And I do appreciate everything that we're learning because this is kind of all new to me. But um, you know, first of all, and this may not be fair for for you, but um, you know, we heard um at one of our recent meetings that there's some sort of uh public commission that's also looking at police issues. There's this Measure G that was just passed. You know, it's a lot, it seems to be there's a number of things happening. Is there, what is the full breadth of things that are going on that the city's doing to address policing, if you have, if you know those? And given what those are, is now the right time to be, or guess what is the argument for looking at a charter, maybe doing something in the charter versus letting some of that stuff play out beforehand? Recognizing it may be a long time before another Charter Commission is, comes into being.
Well, there are a lot of um, a lot of things that are being looked at in terms of, and I'm going to use the term the city uses, it's called reimagining the policing in San Jose. Um, there's a reforms work plan with many, many, many items. Um, one of them is a committee um looking at, it's called the Reimagine Committee, and one of their primary um topics that they've self-identified is um oversight of the Police Department. Um, one of those items is um a direct, a direction by council to me and to the City Manager to uh hire a consultant to look at whether or not or how we can move investigations out of Internal Affairs to a different entity. Um, there's the Charter Review Commission, which is also taken up. Oh, yeah, this is, I go to so many meetings, I can't remember. Yeah, so you're looking at oversight. Um, I mean, I could send to um, I guess Lawrence, uh, the complete and latest update on where all those moving parts are. Um, I think it's, I don't think it's really I don't think it's really up for me to say whether or not you should step aside or continue. Um I think you have a ground full of support for you, and that's being buoyed by the reimagining committee. Uh you know, creating some synergy to get things over the goal line. So I'm I'm, I think it will be up to to you to decide.
Thank you, Patricia Bruce.
Thank you, Chair. With with the provision about giving the city council the power to change. The duties of the IPA instead of bringing it to a public vote, how does that expand? The IPA's role?
I. I haven't contemplated that a lot, there's been a lot of movement lately, um. I think the one thing that would be beneficial is that if it's by ordinance only, that might. Well, you'd probably have to ask the attorney assigned to this committee whether that would lessen um the need to go to um meet and confer with the POA. I think. So for instance, in the past, uh we were able to do things by a charter amendment by an ordinance change, number one was we were able to. Attend these um officer involved shooting panels and or be notified of the incident. You know, within hours of the incident occurring so that we could get an informal briefing and respond to the scene. So that was something that was added to our duties by ordinance, um and that, I think, was a really a a good expansion. Um but currently, nothing, uh nothing else has come to mind, because in the past, we've always been constrained by the by the charter.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners? Mr. Sivol.
Just very quickly, I wasn't really clear why when you need documents, you have to go to the mayor and city manager to get documents like. I don't think surgeons have to do that to make decisions. Um certainly, the city auditor doesn't have to go to the mayor or city manager to get documents, why do you have to go to the mayor? And city manager to get? Do- documents?
Okay, just just to clarify, um we. Can ask for documents if we go through the steps of making sure what we're looking at is tied to a current complaint. And number two, that it is um tied to an item that's on a work plan approved by the council. Uh the city manager and other people only come um if before we. Um announce any recommendations based on the reports or records that we requested and received. Um but this structure was um pretty much put in place because it was a back and forth negotiation. Between the city um and the POA, I think there was concern on behalf of the POA that. Um allowing um more unfettered access to records uh would result in a fishing expedition. Um you know, a a untoward and unnecessary intrusion into records that. You know, we we have no business in reviewing, so I, it was a a compromise between the city and the POA.
And you were, was your office involved in that compromise or excluded?
We don't, we don't get involved in meet and confer negotiations.
Okay.
Mr. Quaitran.
Um this is, uh this is a too involved response, don't, then you give me a very high level response, but um. Do you have the, you have the ability to to send in document requests under the Public Records Act to anyone else, that's right, or or are police records exempt from the PRA?
So, you know, a a lot of police records are exempt from the PRA under, I think it's Government Code three, three, oh, three and following. Um I have, I could put in for Public Records Act requests for any documents I wanted, um just like anybody else. I think, you know. Any documents I receive would, number one, be qualified under the exceptions to the Public Records Act for police records. Um any attorney, client, or product, um and they would all be redacted. So um it, you know, we haven't in the past done any Public Records Act because basically the. The flow of work and um not really. I guess we just haven't done it, I don't, I don't know many city departments, you know, hand PRAs over to other city departments.
All right, it sounds like it just wouldn't be effective, but uh thank you, I appreciate it.
Any final questions?
I see Commissioner Barus' hand.
I I think he just didn't take it down, is that true, Patricia Bruce? Think that's what happened. Um then let me thank you for joining us this evening, Shavana, I really appreciate your time, both to the subcommittee and their information. I would request that you do send that document to Lawrence so that we do have a another current update on the other um happenings in the city around. Um police issues, we really appreciate you uh sending us that, and thank you so much for coming tonight for all your work. Thanks so much for joining us. At this time, we're gonna ask our next guest, um and we have, this is gonna be a longer. Uh presentation, we have three speaker, excuse me, four speakers coming uh on the issues of community police oversight. And we scheduled this for just over an hour of presentations, um and we will then take all four speakers first. And then we will go to Q and A from the commissioners, so um record your questions down so that you know what you're gonna ask later. Um and I believe Mr. Alden is here. Great, thank you, you are awesome, thank you so much. Uh Mr. John Alden, the Executive Director of the City of Oakland's Community Police Review Agency. Uh and we've asked Mr. Alden to speak for, uh make his presentation, and we've allotted a thirty minutes um for this presentation. Mr. Alden, thank you so much for coming and joining us this evening, um and welcome to our commission. Um could the clerk take down the um? The slides from the, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alden, it's all yours.
Great, thanks, I really appreciate all of you uh having me tonight, thanks for the invitation. Thanks also for your interest in police oversight in general, I think that's a a topic every city should be looking at very, very closely, and I'm glad San Jose has too. Um I have a PowerPoint, if it's all right with folks, uh I'll share my screen.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Wonderful. So um. I'm gonna speak very broadly here to um a variety of issues. Uh firstly, make sure everyone can see the screen, okay?
We can see the screen, if you want to put in presentation mode, we'll see even better. Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep, sure, um. I'm gonna cover here the basic structure that we have in Oakland currently. Um there are so many topics we could talk about inside this presentation that um. We could fully talk about this for a few hours, and I don't wanna pick up too much of your time. So um I'm gonna hit what I think are some of the things that you might be most interested in. And I welcome any questions you might have, so of course, I'll stay for the question session at the end. Um this presentation is really designed to cover very broadly. What it is that we're doing currently in Oakland for police oversight. We currently have a uh police commission, and I'm gonna be telling you about how that's structured and what its authorities are, it's an all volunteer. Set of uh community members here in Oakland that are overseeing the police department in a variety of important ways. In addition to that, we have a separate agency that's supervised by the police commission called the Community Police Review Agency, or CIPRA. I'm the Executive Director of that agency, that agency is purely an investigative model. Our primary role is to investigate specific allegations of misconduct. Uh that come in from the public about specific officers in specific incidents. We also have a a third branch of our oversight structure, which is an inspector general's office. And the purpose of the inspector general's office is to look for patterns, practices, this is what we call a uh performance auditing model. It's designed not to look at specific cases in the way that CPRA is. It's designed to look at the overall performance of the police department. And whether that performance matches or does not match existing policies and laws about how police are supposed to perform. And I'll talk a little bit in more detail about how those two models are very, very different. Um the work of CPRA and the work of the inspector general um are of quite different characters, and I think that's an important part of our our model. I'm gonna start with the police commission. The police commission was uh created in twenty sixteen by Measure LL, a charter amendment here in the city of Oakland. It was later expanded and clarified by Measure F one, another charter amendment uh in twenty twenty. The um. Purpose of the the police commission was to create an entirely different umbrella over police oversight. So the police commission has been given at least five separate powers in the charter. Each of which are independent of each other, and each of which involve um a very uh different set of levers, if you will, for reforming the police department. The first one is the creation of policy and approval of policies at the police department. Uh the second is the ability to hire, fire, and do performance uh appraisals of the chief of police. A third is to examine the police department's proposed budget in any given budget cycle and make recommendations to the city council about how perhaps. That budget should change or how it might better reflect community needs. A fourth is to oversee CPRA, the agency I'm running, so the investigations that are being done into specific allegations of misconduct. And then finally, to oversee the inspector general, which is looking at broad patterns of behavior at the police department. Any city could uh create a commission with any one of these five powers or any mix of them. One thing that I think is unusual and uh a real positive in Oakland. Is that our commission has all five of these powers. Uh that is an unusual model in the sense that there are a lot of specific powers given to our police commission. Uh there are a few others that are similar, San Francisco and Los Angeles have very similar models. But generally speaking, it's unusual that police commissions um outside of several of the big cities in California have this many powers. That commission is made up of three mayoral appointees. And then four other appointees that are picked by what we call the selection panel. The selection panel is itself a wholly separate body with members picked by the mayor and also by the city council. And its only purpose is to select members of the police commission. So the concept here um that inspired the proponents of Measure LL to create the selection panel. Was to try to take some of the politics out of the selection of police commissioners and have an independent group. Um that uh would pick those police commissioners in a very public and transparent way. So that the public would have opportunity to have input into which of these uh potential commissioners they thought were best. The selection panel uh is one of the many uh boards and commissions of the city of Oakland, so it has public meetings subject to the Brown Act. And those people who wish to be selected by that selection panel to serve on the police commission do a public interview. And their resumes are available to the public uh before the selection panel votes on which of those people to select for the commission. So it's a, it's a very um public intensive process in which um those potential candidates for the police commission. Um do have to uh be able to explain why they wanna be on the commission, what their vision of reform is for the city of Oakland. Why they have appropriate credentials to be on uh that commission, and then um. They're subject to some public comment about whether they actually can demonstrate those things. Um that, I think, is also an unusual uh method for selecting police commissioners. And I think it's come to be a real strength for the city of Oakland. All of the police commissioners are volunteers. Um they are not selected by district or any other criteria, with the exception, at least one of them has to have been um an attorney. With some experience as a prosecutor or a judge, and usually that person is a mayoral appointee. And other than that, there are no qualifications other than that, one is a resident of the city of Oakland. There are bans, however, on people who are former members of the police department or anyone who's been um. In the business of representing a police union. Now, if someone were a resident of the city of Oakland and had some experience in policing from some other agency other than the Oakland Police Department, they'd still be qualified. But not if they were a member of the Oakland Police Department. Of the five powers I was talking about earlier, I think perhaps one of the most fascinating is the police commission's policy authority. Like a small number of other commissions, the Oakland Police Commission has the ability to uh control the policies of the police department. There are a few ways that the commission can do that under our charter, one is that the commission can just on its own propose a new policy of the police department. Another is that if the police department wishes to change certain specific policies that are listed in the charter, like use of force. Racial profiling policy, First Amendment alike, um those policies must come to the police commission for approval. The police commission has a limited time to make changes if they wish to. If at the end of the day, the police department and the police commission disagree over what the new policy should be. That disagreement uh is submitted to the city council, which can then. Pick the commission's version, the police department's version, or some other version, or maybe ask them to make further changes. Now, the commission only has one staffer right now, plus, as we're gonna hear about in a little bit, some assistants from the inspector general to work on this project. So uh in the long run, we're gonna need to build more staffing around this function. But that said, um I think another important part of our police commission model is that the police commission has an independent council. Separate from the city attorney, who is hired by the police commission and works only for the police commission. Um our city charter requires a budget for that position, uh which we currently have, and um we have a temporary council in that position now. And we're doing a recruitment for a permanent council on that position. Um I think having this independent council um is also a critically important part of our commission model. Because um it ensures that the police commission is getting advice about oversight. Without having sort of the, they have the cross cutting pressure that a lot of city attorneys and county council have of also trying to think about. How that oversight might affect litigation or labor relations or other issues that maybe aren't as directly related. To the public's expectations about police performance, but are issues that other parts of the city attorney or county council might have to work on. I think it's very challenging for city attorneys to provide um. Fully neutral advice about uh police oversight because it's so tied into these other issues. And likewise, I think it's a continuing challenge for city attorneys, you know, when they're working on, say, defending claims. Of uh police misconduct in court when the city is sued, it's very challenging, I don't mean to suggest otherwise. That's a really hard job for an attorney to to wear both hats at the same time, and this model helps relieve that pressure. And make sure that both the city attorney, you know, is fully focused on, say, the litigation issues they have. And the police commission is fully focused on the police oversight issues they have. Now, another really important power that our commission has is the the power to uh. Have a critical role in hiring and firing the chief, but also provide performance uh appraisals of the chief of police. When it's time for the city of Oakland to pick a new police chief, the commission interviews applicants, does a recruiting process, and creates a short list of candidates. For that position, which then gets to the mayor. The mayor then selects a chief from that list or asks for a new list. Um now, it's not clear how many times the mayor might be able to ask for a new list, but um you know, that said, it's clear that ultimately the commission's gonna create a list. For the mayor, and the mayor needs to pick from that shortlist, the mayor can't go outside that list. The commission can fire the chief of police for cause on its own, it'd have to articulate what that cause was. But in addition to that, the mayor and the commission acting together can fire the chief of police without having to show cause, but the two have to agree that that's the the right thing to do. And in fact, um so far here in Oakland, since the time this commission was created, uh they have acted uh in concert with the mayor. Uh to fire one police chief and hire a new one. So our current police chief is one that came from a shortlist created by the police commission and then finally selected by the mayor. The commission can give the police chief some goals and some performance expectations and provide the police chief feedback about those over time. So there is some direction there, now they're not unique in that regard. Um the city administrator who works closely with city council and the mayor can provide, you know, um performance objectives to the chief too. Um but that's another important part of the police commission's role, so there's this very direct role in selecting the chief. Um again, in concert with the mayor, and then also in providing the chief with performance objectives and assessing that performance over time. Few other commissions have the ability to hire or fire the chief in some measure, including Honolulu, San Francisco, and Los Angeles. There may be some others, but those are the ones we're aware of. A third and entirely separate power that the Police Commission has is recommending some budget decisions around the Police Department to the City Council. Now, as in every city that I'm aware of, the City Council ultimately makes the final decisions about the city budget as to all departments every year. There's no question that is their, their final authority. Our Charter provides that the Police Commission can provide some advice to the council, an advisory opinion, if you will, about whether the OPD proposed budget, as the budget's working its way through the approval process at City Council, does or does not meet community needs. And that targeting to community needs is specifically called out in the Charter. So, there is this budget review power that the commission has. And we're working on building staff at the Inspector General's office that will allow the commission to do that more effectively or staff directly to the commission. So, there's this financial review issue that happens too. At the end of the day, the proposals that come from the Police Commission are still among many that the City Council considers. And the City Council approves that final OPD budget. But it is a remarkable power that the Police Commission can delve into that budget, ask important questions, are entitled to receive information about the budget proposals at a fairly early stage, and then can, you know, provide some very direct targeted advice about it. Few other departments in most cities have a commission that provides advice like that to the council about what the budget priority should be. A fourth power our commission has is overseeing CPRA. Now, this is a, a power that you do see in a larger number of commissions than is the case in, in, say, some of the other powers we just talked about, like policy amendment or hiring and firing the Chief of Police. But it is important that our Police Commission has some power to oversee CPRA in a couple of ways. One is that the commission hires and fires the super executive director, so my position. At one time, under Measure LL, that was a position where the commission came up with a short list and the mayor would eventually pick someone off that list or the city administrator. But today, that decision-making is made entirely by the commission as a result of Measure S1 last year. The commission can also fire the CPRA Executive Director. And in fact, they did that before I came on with another executive director. And as of today, have the power to completely pick that executive director themselves. The CPRA Executive Director is a department head-level position in the city of Oakland. And that's designated actually in the Charter. So, this is a position that does not report to anyone other than the Police Commission. I don't report to the city administrator, the way most department heads do. But I have the same authority to create budget proposals to go to council or to make decisions about hiring or releasing staff in the same way that another department head would. That, I think, is also an important part of, of this model. It makes it clear that this is not an advisory body to the Police Department, but an entirely separate department standing on its own. CPRA's main job is to investigate allegations of police misconduct. We get some direction from the commission as to priorities. And I think that's very important too, because it allows for a direct route for the community to give input to the commission, which they can then distill and get to CPRA. They let us know what kinds of cases they think are going to be the most important, what sorts of cases we should prioritize, which ones we should delve the deepest into. We have the ability to investigate every case in which the public has made a complaint. That's, it varies a little from year to year, but that's roughly 500 complaints in a year. There are usually another 500 or so that are internally generated to a supervisor complaining about a subordinate at the Police Department. So, it's a lot of cases. We don't quite yet have the staff to investigate all of those. So, we investigate several hundred of them here. The Charter gives us some prioritization about which cases are the highest priorities. And so, we make sure we look at those first. Those include things like officer-involved shootings, any use of force, claims of racial profiling or discrimination, First Amendment issues like police performance at, say, a protest or the like. In some cases, we'll talk about this in a little more detail in a bit, the commission also makes final binding disciplinary decisions in certain disciplinary cases that CIPRA investigates. In this regard, it's not an after-the-fact audit, nor is it an advisory opinion, as is the case in many cities. This is actually the final decision for the city as a whole about what discipline that officer will be subjected to if the case is sustained. And in addition, they decide whether any given case should be sustained or not if it hits certain criteria. That's a really important power. It's one that's possessed, again, by a small number of commissions, like the San Francisco Commission, for example. A fifth and final power is overseeing the Inspector General's office. Now, the Inspector General's office is very new. We are, in fact, in the final few months, hopefully weeks, of selecting our very first Inspector General in the city of Oakland. And then that Inspector General's going to be building out this office. So, what I'm talking about here is mostly prospective, right? The Police Commission has the ability to hire and fire that Inspector General, just like they can hire and fire the CIPRA Executive Director. With one caution here, termination can only be for cause. So, there are some limits to the commission's power there, but no one else picks this Inspector General. And here's, I think, the most important thing to understand about this Inspector General. The vision for the Inspector General is that that person would examine patterns and practices within OPD across the board as opposed to specific individual allegations of misconduct. Let me give you a quick example just to make that clear. Someone might come to us from the public and say, hey, I was walking down Broadway the other day and I saw some police officers using a Taser on someone. I thought the way they did it was inappropriate. I'd like you to investigate. Over at CPRA, we will take that case. We have independent investigators that work for us that will directly look at the facts of that case and figure out which officers were involved, what was their explanation for why they deployed the Taser, what documentation did they create about it? Can we find and interview the person upon whom the Taser was used? And then we reach a conclusion at the end about whether we think that Taser application was or was not consistent with Oakland policy and the law. That said, someone could raise an entirely different issue in the city of Oakland, which is, you know, the city of Oakland has a Taser policy. And it requires police officers to make sure that they are testing their Tasers before they use them and that they're filming with a body-worn camera, any interaction which they use the Taser. I'd like to know, is the city of Oakland in general, is the Police Department in general, doing a good job of complying with that policy? How often do officers actually comply with that policy? And how often do they fail to comply with that policy? The Inspector General is uniquely positioned to answer that question. So, we see this kind of broad, what we call, performance auditing work in a variety of other cities. Denver has had that to some extent. The San Francisco Department of Police Accountability has recently launched an auditing arm that's still in its early stages, but does a little bit of this work. Probably the greatest single example is an auditing division within the Los Angeles Police Department that does these kinds of audits across the board. There are also some examples from Seattle and a few other cities. But basically, an auditor in this kind of job will say to themselves, okay, I'm going to figure out how many Taser applications we have in a year. I'll pick a year, maybe last calendar year. We'll figure out a statistically rigorous, thoughtful, random sample of all those Taser applications. I'm going to figure out what 10 or 12 things I think the policy requires each one of those Taser applications. I'll analyze in that random sample every Taser application that sample. And then I'll create some statistics about how well those cases show compliance or non-compliance. And so, then at the end of the day, we can have a public report that actually says, hey, you know, out in the community, we see that in this part of town, Taser compliance was actually pretty good. Ninety-five percent of the time, officers were complying with our expectations. But in this other part of town, they're only complying maybe 50 or 40% of the time. So, we know we need to focus on officers in this other division where compliance was low to try to bring up that compliance rate. And in this regard, it's really essential we have this Inspector General and that they not be reporting to, say, the Chief of Police or with all respect to the city administrator, not to the city administrator either. This should be an independent function, much as CPRA's investigations of individuals are independent. Inspector General's going to be independent too. So, here in Oakland, this is particularly important to us because we've been under federal court oversight for quite some time. At some point, hopefully in the near future, we'll successfully complete that oversight process and no longer be subject to oversight. But there is a strong feeling among many in the city of Oakland that the expectations in that federal oversight should continue to be met. That even after we're out from under federal oversight, we should still be hitting the same benchmarks. That the Oakland Police Department as a whole should still be performing to the same level as expected in that federal court oversight process. And so, this Inspector General is the tool to test, to check the data, to make sure we can continue to see compliance with those expectations. So, you know, all that being said, I think you have a little bit of an idea now already about the other two legs in this three-legged stool here. The second is CPRA. I've talked about that a little bit. I know that there've been some, a couple of questions that I, I got in advance about what exactly, you know, we do at CPRA. As I mentioned earlier, it's really important to understand that we're doing investigations of individual claims of misconduct. We have an entirely civilian investigative staff for that. In fact, we are not allowed to hire people who are former members of the Police Department, of the Oakland Police Department. They could have prior experience from some other agency, but not from the Oakland Police Department. We also have our own independent counsel, yet another separate independent counsel than the commissions. And in the course of any given year, we investigate several hundred cases of police misconduct. That investigation process looks a lot like what you might see at, in any other police department where that investigation's run by Internal Affairs. But in our case, it's not run by the Police Department at all. It's just by us. We have investigators that look at the same material that a police officer assigned to Internal Affairs might look at. Try to have some humility about this, but candidly, I do think for some of the reasons that your auditor was mentioning in her presentation earlier today, civilian investigators do a better job and are more independent than police investigators. And I think that we are more likely to come to a sustained finding than our police officers. We have noticed in our statistics that when we do that, the people whose cases we found showed some misconduct by a police officer, but Internal Affairs thought did not show misconduct by a police officer. In those cases where we sustained and they didn't, disproportionately, the person who was the subject of that misconduct, who suffered from the misconduct, was a person of color. And that's a pretty dramatic disparity we see in our statistics. So, we think that's a really important part of the racial equity ad that we provide through CPRA. And the staff we have really work very, very hard in thinking about how racial equity affects some of the investigations we conduct. And I think that's a really important part of civilian oversight too. So, how are our cases resolved? So, in our system currently, CPRA is doing this investigation I just described, which is robust and independent, includes interviewing the officers, thinking expansively about what allegations or what kind of misconduct might be there, trying to stay as fair as we possibly can, but also digging as deep as we can. And in that regard, we are operating entirely parallel to Internal Affairs. They're doing another investigation too on every one of our cases. So, at the end of the day, the police chief and I sit down and compare the outcomes we got. What were the allegations that we investigated? Did we choose to sustain them, meaning we found the officer did something wrong? Or do we not sustain them? And in those cases, what discipline do we think should be imposed on the officer? If we agree about the outcome, then that is the, the decision for the city of Oakland. In the same way that, say, you know, in other cities, the police chief would make that decision independently and that would be a binding decision for that city. If the two of us disagree, we present that material, that whole case, to a subcommittee of our Police Commission called Discipline Committee. It's a group of three instead of the full group of seven commissioners. And then membership rotates periodically. They're able to look at everything that Internal Affairs gathered and everything that CPRA gathered. CPRA has access to all the same records that IAD does as a matter of Charter. And so, it's exactly the same, you know, body of material at the end of the day, just different conclusions about, you know, what we think is important in these cases. And sometimes different routes through the investigation. We might have found material that Internal Affairs didn't. We share that when we show it to the Chief of Police, but it may be that we have some different statements or interviews and the like that are important. So, at the end of the day, we take that to the Discipline Committee and that Discipline Committee resolves what should and should not be sustained and what discipline should be imposed, if any. And so, at the end of the day, that decision gets made by the Police Commission and that becomes the position of the city of Oakland. It can't be reversed by anybody else. It's not advisory to anyone. It's not something that the city administrator or HR can, can change. They could come to us and persuade us to change it, but it can't be changed without the Discipline Committee or CPRA weighing in and agreeing. Now, a downside of this process is that currently under state law, these investigations of police personnel are all confidential. There are some limited exceptions, as your auditor was saying, because of SB 1421 and there may be some more coming this year. But even with those, California remains the most closed of all states in this regard. So, only on rare occasion are we able to tell the public much in a substantive way about our cases. I wish state law were different in that way because I think that would be beneficial to the public. And it would help also, I think, help the Police Department understand better what the public does and does not find acceptable in their conduct. In the long run, I think that's going to lead to better policing and stronger community relations. But at this time right now, across the state, we just can't share that information. So, we, we struggle with that, as everyone does. And then, you know, finally, we talked a little bit about the Inspector General. I mentioned earlier about how the Inspector General is going to be using a performance audit model, not an investigative model. Another key difference here with the Inspector General is that that Inspector General will be able to do public reports. You can see public reports of this sort out of the Audit Unit in the Los Angeles Police Department. In San Francisco, their Department of Police Accountability released one about use of force just, I think, last year. And so, you know, these public reports, I think, are also an important part of the Inspector General's process. It creates much greater transparency about what's happening across the board in a police department than individual investigations can, given current state law here in California. So, we're really looking forward to getting our Inspector General up and running. I think that's going to be really a central part of oversight here in Oakland. So, I know I've gone on for a while. I really appreciate your patience and listening to me about all these issues. I'd be happy to answer your questions when you get to that part of the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alden. I appreciate your great presentation, very clear, very helpful. Our next speaker is Seth Phil Perez, who's the Executive Director of the County of Orange, Office of the Independent Review. Mr. Perez, we also have 30 minutes for you. Welcome and thank you so much for joining us tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Folks, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. As the chair mentioned, my name is Sergio Perez and I am the Executive Director of the Office of Independent Review here in Orange County. And I think this is a great presentation to follow Mr. Alden's because the Office of Independent Review is much more the investigative model than he was describing. And now, it is a county agency. So, some of what I will be going over may be less useful to you than what he was discussing at a city level. But I hope that the tools that I'm going to describe the Office of Independent Review having and the kind of work product that comes out of my office will help clarify the landscape as you consider to think through the various tools that are available in the oversight space. As a bit of background, I began my career as a trial attorney with the Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Department of Justice from 2010 through 2013 during what I consider to be one of the heydays of the Civil Rights Division. I was a part of the Special Litigation Section and helped investigate law enforcement agencies throughout the country, actually bringing pattern or practice lawsuits against various law enforcement agencies, including the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office in, in Arizona, which was then led by Sheriff Joe Arpaio, and cases out in Ohio and Puerto Rico. And so, that's where I come to this work from. I've helped investigate alleged patterns or practices in the law enforcement space. And I've helped litigate them in federal court. I've helped negotiate consent decrees and enforce settlement agreements. Since my time there, I've served as the Director of Enforcement for the Los Angeles City Ethics Commission, an independent city agency with jurisdiction and enforcement powers to address allegations of various kinds of political corruption and other to address allegations of various kinds of political corruption and other kinds of issues. I have served as the Executive Director of the Orange County Office of Independent Review for about a year and a half. The office in Orange County has a bit of a tortured history. It was created in two thousand seven, following the savage beating of an individual in Orange County jail. At that point, both the community and the Orange County Board of Supervisors, the elected body that supervises Orange County government, decided that there needed to be an independent voice to help understand how the Sheriff's Department was doing its work and to lend transparency to that work. That initial model failed spectacularly. After about a six- to seven-year period, there were a series of scandals that came out of the Sheriff's Department, including alleged misuse of criminal informants within the jails, along with other issues, that led the Board of Supervisors to revamp the office. In revamping the office, they conferred on it an investigatory mission in a very broad jurisdiction that is fairly unique nationwide. So the Office of Independent Review now has investigatory authority and advisory authority with regards to the Sheriff's Department, the District Attorney's Office, the Probation Department, the Public Defender's Office, and last but not least, the Social Services Agency. It's a very broad mandate, a very broad jurisdiction. And the chief powers that it has is the power to access information and, in keeping with county and state law, the ability to release descriptive public reports. That power is anchored not in the subpoena power, which is the model that is used in certain contexts. Chiefly, a good example of this is the Los Angeles Police Department Inspector General has subpoena power. The Los Angeles County Office of Inspector General has subpoena power. My office, the Office of Independent Review, has access through a more traditional attorney-client relationship with the County of Orange. That means that through a request to the Sheriff's Department or any of the multiple agencies that I've described, it has the authority to receive that information without redactions. So so long as County Council, the version of the City Attorney's Office here in Orange County, has access to information, the Office of Independent Review also has access to that information. That's how it's laid out on paper. But just like with subpoena power, the proof or the power is truly sort of in practice. What I have found over the last year and a half is steady access to information, and it has allowed my office to issue the kinds of public reports that Mr. Alden described. Most recently, we issued a sweeping review of the force policies and practices of the Orange County Sheriff's Department. That review was split up into three parts. The first component was a review of the force policies currently in place at the Sheriff's Department, helping identify particular key areas that I believe are that merit improvement, including a lack of discussion of de-escalation and a lack of detail in certain critical areas, including in the use of lethal force. It also involved myself and staff sitting in on use-of-force trainings. And those are the kinds of environments that the public rarely, if ever, has access to. And so we sat through every single use-of-force training class offered in the Training Academy for recent recruits of the Sheriff's Department. We listened to the same presentation. We reviewed the same materials, and we described the issues that we found, both issues that we thought merited praise and those that merit improvement. Finally, we reviewed a statistically relevant sample of use-of-force incidents to ensure that we were taking into account the reality of the situation. I like to think of it as an investigation of paper, then an investigation of training, and finally, an investigation of actual use-of-force incidents. This report went live about a month ago. You can find it on our website at oir.ocegov.com. Got a fair amount of press also, but I invite you to take a look at the full report and the summary. I bring up that report because I think these conversations, especially in the investigatory space, if you're thinking about an oversight body that is empowered to both access information, make use of it, and then make it public, it's helpful to think about what that final product should be, what you're aiming for. If you're aiming for the kind of discreet, individual disciplinary actions that Mr. Alden was describing and ascribing to his commission, then the investigatory model, in the classic inspector general sense or in the Office of Independent Review here in Orange County, doesn't have that, right? I have zero power to discipline individual deputies. I do have the power, in certain instances, to investigate individual incidents and to refer that information to the Sheriff's Department or to other agencies. But I don't have the power to levy discipline. And that's a crucial distinction in the model that Mr. Alden described with his commission and here in the Office of Independent Review. And now the Office of Independent Review has that investigatory component, which I've described. It also has the more traditional monitoring components that are often found in inspector general's office. So I have, with the cooperation of the Sheriff's Department, access to particular confidential meetings that allow me to live monitor the treatment of certain events, critical incidents, like deputy-involved shootings, in custody deaths. I have the authority to monitor those kinds of situations. I don't have the authority to directly influence them or to mandate anything, but I have the authority and power to make recommendations. Many of the limitations that I'm describing are a function of the separation of powers that exists at the county level. And one of the things that Mr. Alden was essentially describing was a governance model for law enforcement agencies. And at the city level, much like in Los Angeles and clearly in Oakland, there is a new or newish type of government governance model taking root, right? The building of commissions that have the power to hire and fire chief executives of police agencies and to directly discipline employees in those agencies. At the county level, the separation of powers does not allow for that. The sheriff is a duly-elected constitutional officer. The Board of Supervisors, which directly appoints me, does not have the authority to remove him from office, barring very spectacular circumstances that are fairly unprecedented. And so the model that I am describing reflects that political reality, that different landscape. But I do think that it serves as a useful touchstone for you all in considering investigatory authority and investigatory power. I have found, both in my litigation background at the U.S. Department of Justice and now in the role that I play here in Orange County, that the access to information, free or as nearly free of obstruction as it can be forced into being, is crucial to this kind of work. At some point in the future, every oversight agency runs into a wall, because the question that they are seeking to have answered might lead to a very inconvenient answer. And because of that, that access to information and the access to disclose that information in keeping with state and other applicable laws is tantamount and crucial. And there are different models that you can use to establish that access to information. The Orange County model, which works for this community, is one anchored in that attorney-client relationship, a more traditional structure. But increasingly, obviously, because of recent changes to state law, you see the subpoena model taking root. L.A. County recently conferred subpoena power on its Office of Inspector General, and the Inspector General's office has sought to use that subpoena power. Unfortunately, right, as a bit of a cautionary tale, those subpoenas haven't achieved their intended result. So the Office of Inspector General and the Civilian Oversight Commission there, a separate body that is staffed by volunteers, have both issued subpoenas that in certain instances have gone ignored by the sheriff. What happens in those situations? Well, you go to court and you seek to enforce those subpoenas. But obviously, those civil processes are slow and imperfect and can lead to all sorts of results or lack thereof. And so those are the two primary models that I'm familiar with, the subpoena process that I've just described and the attorney-client relationship anchored model, the one that is in power in my office. One final thing, not final, but another issue that I wanted to highlight for you all is that my body is entirely advisory. It does not have the power to set policy or to change a current policy. It has the power to make public recommendations. And because of the political separation of powers that exists at the county level and the fact that the sheriff is the duly-elected chief executive of the Sheriff's Department, that's fairly standard at the county level. The Sheriff's Department's Internal Affairs Division does conduct all disciplinary investigations. My investigations cannot result in disciplinary action, regardless of what findings I make. I do not have that authority, and it lives entirely within the Sheriff's Department. But because of that reason, my investigations don't run aground with regards to the Police Officer's Bill of Rights, right? The Police Officer's Bill of Rights is something that is anchored in employment-based rights. And whenever there is a disciplinary or employment-based outcome at issue, then obviously, POGRA applies. But because the Office of Independent Review does not raise those concerns, does not impact those property rights, then the Police Officer Bill of Rights does not apply. I also don't have the power, however, to compel testimony, to force someone to sit down with me and answer my questions. So there's a limitation that comes with that trade-off. Overall, the kind of access that I've described in Orange County, which again is predicated in that attorney-client relationship that I had with the county, has worked with certain stumbling blocks. I'm limited in what I can discuss in that arena, but I will stress that every model comes with its drawbacks. The issue with the inspector general model is that there will always be, as Mr. Alden was describing, limitations on the kind of information that can be made public. I often find myself in an environment where I have access to much more information that I can ever possibly make public, in part because of the state laws that mandate in this space. As Mr. Alden was describing, certain kinds of disciplinary information, which I can access, I can never make public. I can go to the Sheriff's Department and say, "Give me these Internal Affairs investigations. Give me the interviews that you conducted. Give me the outcomes. Give me all of the evidence that you marshaled and assessed." But despite having that information, I'm limited in how I can publish it. However, I can do the kinds of analyses, both qualitative and quantitative, that can allow certain patterns, certain practices to be made public, and then I can make recommendations about those. And so that's the trade-off that comes with the Office of Inspector General model. And happy to discuss it when this conversation is at that stage, in terms of any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perez. The next speaker is going to be Mr. Russell Bloom, I believe, is there? Bloom is the independent police auditor for BART. And again, we're going to give Mr. Bloom thirty minutes. And Mr. Bloom, thank you for coming this evening and welcome. I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for this opportunity to talk to you about the work that I do. It's a real honor to be here. I think it's very important that you're having this discussion and that we are all having these discussions and definitely honored to share this time with you. I'm going to give you a real snapshot of what the BART civilian oversight system looks like, and then I'm going to talk to you about some of the specific details of our structure that I think should be highlighted for this discussion. And it's important for me to take a step back. In two thousand and nine, many of you may recall that Oscar Grant was shot by then-BART police officer named Johannes Mesery on the Fruitvale Station platform on New Year's Day. As a result of that, the nine-member Board of Directors that runs the BART district, which is a quasi-governmental transit district, I think in large part due to community and advocacy pressure, specifically from the family of Oscar Grant, determined that they wanted to see their own police department reform. It's a transit police department. It's much smaller than the agencies overseen by Mr. Alden and Mr. Perez. They carry about two hundred sworn officers at any given time, but they have the same powers as any other peace officer in the state of California, and they are armed as well. And so as a result of that killing, the Board of Directors sought the authority from Sacramento to create a citizen oversight system. And they did that by looking at existing systems nationally and sort of picking and choosing the different pieces that they thought were appropriate for the BART system, for the BART oversight structure. And I think that's an important thing to highlight, that we've heard of a couple of different systems here already today, three, and each is different. And I think it's really important when you're considering making changes or establishing a new oversight system to note that it's important to tailor that specifically to your community, your government structure, and also to listen very carefully to what the community that you serve, that we serve, is asking for in terms of oversight. So this oversight structure is known as a hybrid structure. It involves a number of different types of oversight authority. So it's a two-pronged oversight system that consists of my office, the Office of the Independent Police Auditor, and also an eleven-member civilian review board or citizen review board. So those members are appointed, and they're intended to provide the community input to the process, but also to act as a check and a balance against the work of my office. So the structure itself has some fail-saves to make sure that I'm not rogue or that I'm not too cozy with the police department or that I'm not being responsive to community needs. So that's sort of a big thirty-thousand-foot view of how this structure came to be and what it looks like in a snapshot sense. But in terms of looking at the different types of authority, I think it's important to look at specific areas, and some of these were brought up by previous speakers, but I'd like to talk specifically about aspects of our model that I think are extremely valuable. And we do have the authority to investigate specific complaints of misconduct. As been described earlier, if a person says, "I was contacted by an officer, and he or she did this thing to me, and I think that that was misconduct," we have the authority to independently investigate that allegation of misconduct. We also have the ability, and it may be as a result of that investigation, that we determine that there's some policy deficiency. Maybe the applicable policy has ambiguous language, where the officer didn't have clarity about how he or she was expected to perform. We may then make a policy recommendation related to that specific incident and all the policies that might play a role in what that outcome was. We also have the authority, if we don't conduct an independent investigation, to review the investigative products of the Internal Affairs Division. And I know Internal Affairs was described earlier. That is the police department's internal accountability system. So I have the authority to review any investigation that the BART Police Department conducts to determine whether that investigation was fair, objective, thorough, and timely. Those are really the big, broad-stroke authority that we have in the Office of the Independent Police Auditor. And now I want to explain to you a little bit about the interaction between my office and the eleven-member civilian review board. So when we receive a complaint for investigation and when we do determine we're going to investigate that, because we don't investigate every complaint that we get, we do have to ensure that every complaint is investigated, but we don't do each one ourselves. But once we've completed that investigation, But once we've completed that investigation, we're required by the BART citizen oversight model to take the results of our investigation, our findings, our recommendations for discipline, if any, to the eleven-member civilian citizen review board in closed session. It's in closed session because as as has been discussed, there are limitations on what can be publicly revealed around these personnel matters, and and we are required to maintain the confidentiality of these investigations. So in closed session, we present our investigative report. We present all of the evidence, transcripts, videos, applicable policy language. And the citizen review board will then vote whether they do or don't agree with our findings and recommendations by simple majority. If they do agree, the language of the model says that the chief of police is then required to implement the findings and recommendations that have come out of my office. The caveat there is that the chief of police may appeal that those findings, as approved by the citizen review board. The office has been in existence over ten years. Historically, there had only been maybe two or three appeals. Notably, there have been two just in the last year. So things change depending on who the chief is. Right now, we we have seen more appeals recently than we had seen historically. But what I'm trying to highlight here is that the default position is that the recommendations for discipline and our investigative findings are required to be implemented by the chief, so it's more than merely advisory at that stage. As part of the investigative process from my office, we do have unfettered access to all documents and all records. The reason I want to highlight this is because from an investigative standpoint, I think it's one of the most valuable tools that we have in doing thorough, objective investigations. The ability to access evidence and information without the filter of the police department determining whether it's relevant or the filter of any city attorney determining whether we're authorized to access it really allows us to let the investigation take us in the direction it wants to. An example that I use fairly frequently is if we ask for all video related to a particular contact, some police officer makes the determination about what all video means. And I, from an investigative standpoint, and to maintain the integrity of that investigation, I want to be the one who determines what's relevant and what's important for that investigation. And there may be things that I see as we're investigating that lead me down another path. And I don't want to have to keep asking for that information, which would also potentially delay our completion, which is problematic for both complainants and officers. So I think that unfettered access is one of the key aspects of our oversight model. Before I go further, I will tell you that the BART citizen oversight model, if you Google it, it'll pop up. It's only thirteen pages, and I think it's a good guiding document to help understand how our particular system was created to fit the needs of this of the communities we serve. Remembering that as a transit district, we go through now five counties, and we have many varying perspectives and varying community needs and demands. And it's challenging to meet all of those equally, but that equitable approach is very important to me in in my work. I also received some some questions in advance that were potentially interesting for for you to hear answers to, you know, the police department has this internal affairs division. And historically, they have been the only entity that would do any misconduct investigation. So until ten years ago, that was the situation at BART. And for many years at BART, if the Office of the Independent Police Auditor received a complaint of misconduct, we are required to notify the police department, and we do that always within twenty-four hours. And historically, parallel investigations would then launch. My office would do one if it was within a certain criteria that we're allowed to investigate, and the Internal Affairs Division would do one. And that created a lot of different problems. Timing was one of them. We have different staffing and different resources, different priorities. And one of us might finish the investigation prior to the other. We might reach different findings. We might have done two different intake interviews where the complainant made five allegations during one interview and six allegations during another. And so it could be confusing when those outcomes were delivered to complainants and to officers. So in two thousand, to clarify, one of the most important pieces of our model, from my perspective, is that from its inception, it included a requirement to review the oversight system itself to determine whether the need existed to make improvements to the system. So shortly after I got my appointment in two thousand sixteen, we moved forward with an external review of our entire oversight structure. It was very detailed and involved interviews with many, many stakeholders and reviews of our work product. And ultimately, a report was generated that recommended fifty-four improvements to our oversight structure. The Board of Directors shortly thereafter approved fifty of those recommendations for improvement. And I like to highlight that because I think it's very important. As Mr. Perez mentioned, you know, the the first iteration of oversight in Orange County, I think he described as a spectacular failure. It's important to know that things change over time. We learn things, perspectives change, context changes, rules are are different as to confidentiality. SB fourteen twenty-one was mentioned, which changes what can be publicly released. My point is only that the ability to be flexible seems very important to me. And I thought it was extremely valuable that we were able to identify areas for improvement and just move right ahead and put those things into place with only the authority of the Board of Directors for Bay Area Rapid Transit. I thought that was a really valuable inclusion in the original model. It remains in our in our revised model with a requirement to do those reviews every three years. In some ways, it may act more as a booster shot going forward after that first one. But we are currently in the process of doing that now. So we have already recognized that some of the things we thought were great solutions to problems with the original model. After three years of implementation, we've realized that even some other tweaks and some other adjustments may be necessary to further improve it. Not as many as last time likely, but again, this sort of constant review and and constant examination, I think, keeps the model healthy and current. And so I I always like to highlight that aspect of our oversight model. When we're talking about the parallel investigative process and the problem with that process, it was identified as one of the areas that could use improvement because for the reasons that I explained. Ultimately, we reached an agreement with the police department where we no longer conduct parallel investigations. If my office elects to take a complaint all the way through investigative process, the police department and Internal Affairs has the option to defer their own investigation, to simply not do one and rely on the outcome of the independent police auditor's investigation as approved by the citizen review board. So I thought that was a very healthy way of streamlining processes and creating a better experience for complainants and for officers and for internal affairs and for my office. So I think that's just a good example of how taking a a look at the way the model is or isn't working well gives you an opportunity to make adjustments and and improve it over time. So we are investigatory. When I talked about monitoring internal affairs investigations, I mentioned that I'm not required to conduct an investigation into every complaint that I get. So historically, under the original model, there were only a certain number of allegations that I was able to or authorized to investigate. The revisions in two thousand eighteen that went into effect in two thousand eighteen now allow me to investigate any allegation of misconduct. Previously, I could only receive complaints from certain people. You had to be the actual victim of the alleged misconduct or the adult parent of a minor victim. And I think also a witness may have been allowed to to complain at that time. But the recommendation for improvement to our model suggested that we should be authorized to investigate complaints or receive complaints from any person, and that is a change that has now been implemented. These are important things in terms of trying to communicate with the communities that we serve about how responsive we can be and how effective we can be. So I think that those expansions were very key for us. When I monitor a case, it's because I've elected not to investigate it, but I'm still required to ensure that a thorough investigation is conducted. So I'll send it to Internal Affairs, monitor their case, and in the old days, that meant I waited till they were done and I reviewed the product to see if I thought it was fair, thorough, objective, and a quality report and that the outcomes were were accurate and that the analysis made sense. We have, again at the suggestion of the external reviewers, revised that process so that now we provide monitoring in real time. What that looks like is we may have a conversation before the officer is noticed by Internal Affairs so that I can suggest, hey, you know, I I read the intake transcript and I think you might be missing an allegation here. And in that way, I'm not coming back six, eight, nine months later and saying, hey, you missed an allegation from the outset. You need to start over. This way, we can get more quality work in real time by actually having a back and forth throughout the process. In some instances, I'm even engaged with Internal Affairs investigators about crafting questions for a particular officer in a particular case. Again, the goal here is to make sure that the things I'm looking for are being addressed by Internal Affairs from the outset so that I'm not coming back in later and requiring some additional follow-up. And as far as the monitoring authority goes for me, I do have the authority to require additional follow-up into any investigation that's conducted by the BART police department. So and as a practical matter, we really don't want to make Internal Affairs undo the whole process and start all over again. So that real-time monitoring, I think, helps generate more quality reports from Internal Affairs. And, you know, it minimizes the the opportunities for me to criticize and require additional work or follow-up from them. We also have the ability, as I mentioned, to craft new policy or craft new language for existing policies. But any policy recommendation that my office makes or any policy change that the BART police department makes must be brought to the BART police citizen review board for their review and comment prior to any implementation. And that, again, is intended to bring in that community piece of the discussion before we sort of mandate or dictate what's an appropriate policy revision or or what's an appropriate new policy to put in place so that there can be discussion, there can be feedback, and there can be an opportunity to improve that policy before it gets rolled out. And I think that's extremely valuable. And one of the other areas of authority that I have is to review every single use of force. Every single use of force incident. So that's manageable fairly because we have a very small department. I think that could be very challenging in in much larger departments. But not only do I have the opportunity to really look closely at all of the details and interactions of a use-of-force incident, I can look, because I have the unfettered access to all of the reports, I can look at the dispatch information that was being conveyed. I can look at the narratives that the officers wrote after the report. I can watch their body worn camera videos from my desk in my office, and I can select which body worn camera videos I think are important to review. I'm not only looking at whether the use of force was justifiable in that moment. I have the ability now to look at whether required de-escalation efforts were employed, whether there were other deployment decisions that might have contributed to the use of force or maybe to an unnecessary use of force. And I can look very carefully at the BART police department's internal use-of-force review system to see if that's being effectively employed. They have an existing system where a supervisor is required to respond for every reported use of force, and it's reviewed for a number of different factors up the chain. I'm also able to examine whether those review systems are functioning the way they're supposed to. So it's it's fairly labor-intensive because it requires watching a lot of video. But it's very important, and most of the many of the important shifts and changes that we've seen in culture and practice have stemmed from discussions around those incidents. When we're talking about use of force, obviously, those sort of that's the hot-button issue around police oversight and policing. I mentioned earlier that our model was expanded to allow me the authority to review any allegation of misconduct from any person. And the reason I think that's extremely valuable is because by looking at what would typically be described as lower-level misconduct, I think it gives us entree into understanding whether there are systemic issues, whether there are individual issues with a particular officer or officers, whether there are problems with approaches to certain activities such as fare evasion enforcement. And by looking carefully at at those lower-level contacts and identifying any problematic behavior or policy or instruction or deployment, I think we're able to short-circuit the systems that lead to the larger-level tragic outcomes. And I really firmly believe that the authority to look at the small stuff is the way that we save lives in the long term. And so I think that's a really important part of what we are authorized to do. It's really impossible for us to count the number of lives we've saved. But I very I feel very confident that by looking very carefully at the culture and the structure of the police department in all the little ways, we're able to see where our attention is needed so that we can avoid the horrible and tragic outcomes. I don't want to speak very long. I definitely want to provide some opportunity for Q and A and and be able to respond more specifically to the things that are of interest to you about my oversight system. And I will allow the Chair of the Citizen Review Board, who's scheduled to speak after me, to talk more about the way that body works. But I just want to point out a couple of other things before I move on. You know, when we're looking at structures like arbitration, or I don't want to use terms of art. So officers have an opportunity essentially to appeal the issuance of discipline. This is not an area that oversight entities typically are allowed to engage in. But the revised model has also allowed me to participate in discussions around any lawsuits, any litigation to discuss risk and risk management, which is something that's, of course, very important to the directors that that run the district. But if it were to pass that our findings, my office's findings, as approved by the citizen review board, were being frequently or typically overturned in the arbitration process, I also have the authority to report out on the ways in which that arbitration process or any other process could be eroding the the oversight system or eroding the efficacy of our oversight system. And so I really look at it as that sort of a big-picture look at what we do and how we're able to make differences and how we're able to make impact, but also looking at the sort of very small granular pieces is I can't say that one piece is more important than any other. And we're very fortunate that the pressure from the family of Oscar Grant landed with the Board of Directors at the time and that they responded appropriately, in my view, by crafting a model that tried to take some of the strongest and most effective pieces of the existing oversight systems in the country at that time to put it into this pot to provide something that was effective and responsive. And that they also had the foresight to know that things change over time and to have the ability to be a little bit fleet of foot around that and to keep things moving forward was also an important piece. So I feel like it's a very good model, a good reference to look at the ways that you can take parts that work well for your community that are responsive to the demands you're hearing and put them all together in a way that makes sense. And if it's not quite working, then you can tweak it until it does work a little bit better, understanding that it's always going to be iterative. But I it's it's I'm passionate about the work. The last thing I will say is that I came to the work primarily as a black man and the father of two black children then now men. I thought that police reform was a very important area for me to engage in. So it's been very rewarding for me in that way. And I continue to do the work that we do at OIPA through a lens of equity, racial equity and other equity. I think that's an important approach to doing any government work. And I just want to leave with that and pass it on to Chair Armstrong. And thanks for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bloom for your presentation. I'm going to welcome now Aaron Armstrong, who's a member and Mr. Blim said you were the Chair. A dubious position I can share with you of the Police Citizen Review Board. And Ms. Eric Armstrong, we're going to give you 20 minutes for your presentation and welcome and thank you so much for joining us this evening to. Talk to us about the the Citizen Review Board at BART.
Thank you. Yes. It's my, so first off, it's my pleasure to be here tonight and talk to you about the important work of police oversight. Especially civilian police oversight. So, you know, I was listening to Russell just now and it sounds like he got a lot of the really, you know, detailed stuff and I feel like that's really great. So really what I want to do to tonight is focus on three areas. There were a series of questions I was given, but they they really boiled down to three. Different areas and I'll talk a little bit about them from my perspective of sitting on the CRB. But also sharing it as well. Russell really approaches it from, you know, he's the investigator and so he he'll talk, you know, a lot about that and and. Sitting on the board, you have sort of a different role where it's really oversight and you're working with. The OIPA, you're working with the Chief of Police, you're working with the Board of Directors like we are here. Because it's a transit district, you know, if you're in a city, you're probably working with the city council or if you're a county, you're a Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, though, the work of oversight, I think, from my perspective boils down to three areas. One is access. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means specifically. The other is the investigation. And the other is being the voice of the community. And so we'll talk a little bit about what those three different things are. So first off, access. You know, is so important. Russell talked about all the fantastic access that he's able to get through the model that we have. You know, because he gets it and he's he's making the reports to the the CRB, you know, that means that we get it and since we're. You know, having public meetings, since we're there, appointed volunteers, members of the public to represent the public, that means the public is getting access. That same level of access. So access really comes down to relationships, power and trust, and I'll talk about those in just a moment. As I mentioned, the second is investigation. This is like with the OIPA, having our own. Office of the Independent Investigator is so important because as volunteers, as members who are, you know, putting in. You know, I'll put in several hours a week just on on this and this is on top of a full time job, being a new mom, all these things. You know, I'm limited in what I can do, but Russell and his team are really able to to conduct thorough. Investigations that give the people who are complaining the due diligence that they deserve. But as a volunteer who can put in a few hours a week. You know, it's a it's kind of a different thing when it comes to our ability to do an investigation, but you have to still be able to understand what the investigation is. You have to be able to follow the rules when it comes to making decisions and things like that. So I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like. And you know, while we're there on investigations. Russell had also mentioned our ability to do policy, which how unique that is. Even Oakland, which I live in, their Citizen Review Board doesn't have a policy advising. And so that's that's something that that I find, at least in in the reviews that I've done of civilian oversight is is quite rare. But as Russell mentioned, we get all of the policies that are changed there. We're required to look at each of those policy changes before they're implemented and give our comment on it. And so something like that we can do in public session. That's a an open meeting. That's the that's the time where you can do those big public investigations. We can have conversations, for example. About fair evasion and what that means and what that means to enforce, you know, a specific crime within the ten transit district. What are the equitable impacts of of that? We can have those kinds of conversations in public at the board level, but when it comes to individual cases. You know, we're really working with Russell with the Independent Investigator. And those types of things you hear in your closed session, you go, you know, you go away from the public, you close it up and you'll hear the specifics of the case. And then you have to, our role within the model is to decide whether or not we agree with that investigation and the findings. It's not our job to come up with the findings, but we we vote yes or no. Do you, do we agree? And there's having it spelled out clearly what happens when you don't agree, what happens, you know, when you do and how is that implemented, all those things. The more that it's it's laid out very specifically like it is in the BART model, which again you can find online. And I highly recommend reviewing as an example. Having it all laid out like that makes it very clear what to do in in different situations because it can get very complicated very quickly. So that's a little bit on the investigation piece. You know, the I I mentioned with access and so I'll go back to that and talk about that for just a moment. The piece about trust. Because we we hear a lot of information in closed session, we hear very specific cases, we see videos of. You know, body camera footage of, you know, incidents that happen and it's our job to. You know, make a call on whether or not we agree with the findings of the OIPA on that. But we also have to be trusted not to talk about those specific findings. So I think that's something to to really know is is, you know, when you're in closed session, you you can't, we can't talk about like the specific cases. But we can talk about kind of general kind of thing. And so that's because we respect that. We're able to build that trust with the department, which means that they're more, they're less, they're going to be less resistant because they have that trust. That's really important. It goes both ways. I'll say recently we had a situation where. The police union had outed one of the, an anonymous complaint using our public comment in a main meeting. I was, it was out of control that that happened. And you know, that's the kind of thing that does not build trust, absolutely breaks it down. And I'll talk about it because it happened in a public meeting. But that's the kind of stuff that really breaks down trust is the kind of stuff that as board members, we we are not interested in doing, we can't do. Because we really have to focus on that trust, not just with, to build it with the people who we represent, but also with the department that you're overseeing. As well. So it's a two way thing and it's really about those relationships. It's it's about knowing that if there is a, an incident that is going to pop up on our radar as a board. That the Chief of Police is is going to reach out and and give me a heads up about, hey, this might be coming down your way. Or Russell might call me and talk about a specific case or something like that, but it's really about having those relationships. Having it built into the model is really important, having that power, but then having that trust. And so I wanted to make sure I hit on those three things with with access. You know, the last piece. With being the voice to the community. So there's a couple of things. I mentioned that you have to follow the rules with closed session. You can't talk about specific cases and things like that. But generally I want to say prepare to be disappointed. And the reason I'll say that is, and I'll just speak broadly. In the time that I have been on the board, which is several years now. I was vice chair for two is on it. So I'm in my fourth year now and I'm the Chair. But and in all that time, we haven't once sustained a finding of racial bias. Think about that. Of all the allegations that you can imagine we get throughout the entire BART district, how many allegations of racial bias? We get, we haven't been able to sustain a single one. And it's very disappointing. And it's because when it that's you have to follow the rules, there's certain things within investigation, right? We can watch a body camera video. We can see something and say, this is clear, this looks like racial bias to me. But if the officer doesn't say like, I'm doing this because of your race base on camera, basically, where our hands are tied. You know, that's the position that we find ourselves in with the laws and and the sort of rights that police officers have. And we have to follow those rules. So, you know, prepare to be disappointed on a couple of things. But at the same time, you know, prepare to have an impact. In the end, you know, I think. Departments have two choices. They can either wait for an incident like Oscar Grant to happen and have to respond. Like Bart did. And then there's, that's when citizen oversight comes in. It's always a reaction to to an incident. So police departments can wait, but it's really a matter of when, not if, because that incident is going to happen. It's going to erode trust in police in the community and that's when oversight happens. So police can either be reactive like that or they can be proactive and and get on board. Ultimately, I think that it makes therefore stronger because they have a a ability to create trust with the community. To create transparency through robust and and, you know, engage civilian oversight. And ultimately, I think that's what they want to be effective and they need that to be effective. So it's it's really a matter of if. Or when, not if, they're going to need oversight and I highly recommend the proactive type of method. But as I mentioned, you know, prepare to have an impact because you are in these situations, the voice of the community. You are so often the one that is is there, that is seeing the details, that has to make the call. And and you know that you're not just there on your own. You're really there. I'm the member at large, for example, and so I represent the entire district. So I'm always thinking about all the different counties within the system and how they might react to a different thing. I'm really trying to represent, you know, something larger than just myself. And and that's really, I think, where you can have a a big difference by engaging at it at this level with the board. I know I've put a lot in there. I know Russell had just a ton of information and specifics as well. And I'm very happy to hang around for any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you so much, Chair Armstrong. I appreciate you also joining us this evening. We're now going to open it up to commissioners for their questions and I appreciate our guests all staying around to be able to answer those questions and respond. And I'm going to open it up to commissioners who raise their hand. Commissioner Marshman, let's get started.
Okay, unmuted. Hi, thank you all. This has been really interesting. I I'm curious about the system in with the BART district of Russell and Erin. It just seems almost come by ish that that everybody trusts everybody. I mean, it's just the way, the way it came across to me. And and if it is at all like that, my question is whether those kinds of relationships existed before. Or if they developed during the establishment of this system. Or if you all were just being a lot more positive than perhaps the reality might be.
That's why I think you could probably speak best to the the hard work that went into building those relationships. And and how that's changed over time.
Thank you, Chair Armstrong, for for elevating that. And it's a great question. And the truth is, we have rough spots. We have disagreements, we have conflict. I think we've been able to work very hard to develop relationships that are based on respect and trust. From my perspective, I feel like the the best way that I've been able to work toward developing those relationships. Was by putting out the highest quality investigative work possible. So that it was above reproach and was clearly and purely objective. And, you know, sort of any perception that we were anti cop or had an agenda. Over time, we were able to prove that we approached our work from a purely objective perspective. And that the outcomes were of the highest quality and that our analysis was sound and evidence based. That's how it starts. And then, you know, it's a matter of being a human and and listening to other people, learning from them, understanding, I don't know better than everybody. And I've got something to learn from anybody. So that really, I think, is how how we've been able to continue to work together. Toward the same goal, which is, you know, it's an express goal to improve policing. And to prevent harm to the people that ride our system and and that are impacted by our police department. Like that's, we're all on the same page with that. And, you know, I there's, once we sort of have an agreement about what the direction is, then it's a matter of just figuring out how to get there. And again, not trying to to mandate as much rather than listen and learn and and work together to figure it out.
The thing that I would just add to Russell. There's a lot of different relationships. The relationship, for example, that our board has with the Chief of Police is very different than the relationship that that we have with the police union. And a lot of that goes back to what are your goals? You know, the goal of the Citizen Review Board is to build and establish trust between the community and the department. And the department honestly has that same goal. The police union, their goal is to represent their officers to the best of their abilities. That's their goal. And so those are, you know, when you can, you can come together when your goals align. And so I think that you have to acknowledge that. We've had to, you know, compromise with the union on a few things and like they have a seat, for example, on our board. They have one, one seat that the union gets to appoint onto a citizen review board. But that's the compromise. And so those types of things are are there. You know, as a as a relic, but you know, you still have to work together, right? We we're still colleagues now on the board. And they may represent the the union and I may represent a different perspective than that. And and ultimately, it's can we work together to be effective? Because if I think if we're just fighting back and forth, it's really not going to accomplish anything.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Percival, followed by Commissioner Matran, Commissioner Percival.
Yeah, thank you. And I I just wanted to also extend my my gratitude to all the speakers tonight. It's been really insightful and also to our our subcommittee to put in together such a great list of of experts. My question was for Mr. Alden. I'm struck by, you know, just the wide degree, at least from your presentation, the differences between Oakland and San Jose. Seems like a lot of ways, San Jose is a number of years behind Oakland with respect to thinking about some of these issues. But I'm wondering what role federal oversight played in, you know, helping to build. A degree of collaboration or maybe you could speak to that a little bit between police union and. The Police Commission. Whether that got, you know, it seems to me that around the country, police unions. Have for a variety of reasons tended to push back against more oversight, more investigative powers and so forth. So I'm wondering if you could speak to a little bit more about the role of the the federal oversight played in putting these issues on the ballot. Shaping public opinion and and giving the kind of powers that the Police Commission has to what seems to be. A wide degree of both broad oversight but also investigative powers.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. I think I would start by saying there's no direct relationship between the federal oversight process and the civilian oversight system that we're continuing to build in Oakland. The commission model that I was describing earlier with CPRA doing the investigations and the Inspector. The commission model that I was describing earlier with CPRA doing the investigations and the Inspector General doing audits was not pushed or presented or requested by the federal monitor or the federal court overseeing that process. Nor was it a specific proposal that moved forward when that federal oversight through the courts first came to be many years ago. So, in that regard, the civilian oversight process we have and the federal oversight process we have have been two entirely separate tracks. You know, they don't directly overlap with each other. On the other hand, I think there's a strong indirect relationship. And that's that I think the federal oversight system we've had has created greater transparency to be able transparency about what's happening within the Oakland Police Department. And I think that has caused many in the city of Oakland to feel that they needed more robust civilian oversight. Second, another indirect effect is that the process of having a monitor deeply involved in many different issues across the police department, interacting with many different mid-level managers, command staff, and even rank and file members on a regular basis over the course of, I think it's more than 15 years now, has created a culture in which it's hard to find people that work for the Oakland Police Department that were even there prior to federal oversight. And to the extent that you find people who were, most of the ones who are still there, at least in my experience, say, you know what, there's actually been a lot of good that's come out of that. Have to admit, rank and file weren't excited about it in year one, but by year 14, we realized we were doing a lot of things better than we had done before. So, I think there's been this cultural change within the police department that's caused officers, but especially command staff, to realize there is benefit in having an independent outside agency taking a close look at what the police department is doing. That, you know, as we've progressively increased civilian oversight, it hasn't been as much of a shock to the system as it is in some other places. And so, I think we have a a culture within the police department that, while certainly not perfect and requires more work, was much more open to this kind of oversight than is the case in other places I've visited.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Matron.
Each of your models is just, you know, definitely different. And I feel like I definitely wanted to dig a little bit more into them to better understand pros and cons. But considering too that a lot of this is relatively new, I'm actually curious about the creation of your system. Was it in conjunction with police officers, police unions? Or did you find that it was more often like in conflict with them in terms of creating the officers that you have and the duties and responsibilities that you you have? This will want me to do two different systems. I appreciate it.
I could just very, very briefly answer regarding why I wasn't here at Bart when Oscar Grant was killed. Being a Bay Area resident, I was aware of the discussions. And I think at the time, there was a lot of police department and police union involvement in the discussion. And I think there was a lot of give and take at the time. I think the police department even recognized itself that it was ripe for some reform. And at the same time, as Chair Armstrong mentioned, the unions are going to union, and they're going to do their best to protect their members. So, a little push, a little pull. But I think the district was motivated to put something powerful into place.
Just to add to that, in Orange County, I think the union that represents the sheriff's deputies and the investigators in the district attorney's office and probation officers was was certainly at the table in hammering out the original version of the Office of Independent Review and in the subsequent reform of that office. The law that empowers the office, as I mentioned previously, limits the role of the Office of Independent Review Review in disciplinary actions. And I think that that certainly was a result of conversations with the union. Frankly, I also think that it's benefited the office tremendously because the union, much like other community stakeholders, should have a voice in 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 the way that oversight looks, in part because its members are so crucial to the functioning of that oversight. As a, as Mr. Alden was explaining in Oakland, rank and file, reticence, or whatever you want to call it, can certainly run aground even the best-laid plans. So, that role in creating the Office of Independent Review, I think, I think also benefits the project of oversight, at least in Orange County.
Now, I can say in Oakland, when we started in in 2016, I was not here for that particular change. I was here for a follow-up measure we put on the ballot called Measure S1 last year in 2020. And we found that the police union here was pretty cooperative, actually, in discussing that and getting it on the ballot. And at the end of the day, actually endorsed the measure when it was before the voters. So, you know, that said, I I do want to flag a really important issue here, which is that just a few months ago, the county of Sonoma found out the hard way that if you don't meet with the applicable union, in this case, your police union in the city of San Jose, before you create changes like these, the state will invalidate them. There was a ballot measure that the citizens in Sonoma County put on the ballot there to alter their oversight system over their sheriff. They did not take that through a meet and confer process with their Deputy Sheriff's Association. And that Deputy Sheriff's Association complained to the the relevant Labor Board here in California, which invalidated the measure, just took it off altogether. So, in Sonoma County, they have the hard, I think, challenge now of figuring out how they're going to like redo that meet and confer process now that they've, I think, fairly alienated that that workers' union and figure out how they're going to put that back on the ballot at some future date, if at all. So, I think for better or for worse, whether people agree that it's a good policy or a bad policy, it is very clear that the state of California requires all local governments to meet and confer with unions before making any of these kinds of changes. But it's something you'll have to think about as you're going through this process. And I'm sure you'll have, you know, thoughtful legal advice about how to do that.
Thank you. Christian Matsky.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for these presentations. I really learned a lot. And in fact, I was going to ask a question of the subcommittee that directly gets to what Mr. Alden just said. And that is, you know, so far, we've really seen from a lot of the police review agencies, but are we going to have the opportunity to actually hear from the San Jose Police themselves about what they think is appropriate oversight of of what they do? So, that that's just a question.
And I'll ask Commissioner Segal to answer that. Do you have a question for the speakers at this time, Commissioner Miski?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Segal, would you like to answer that or respond to that question to your subcommittee?
I'm going to forward that question to Commissioner Calendar.
Okay, Commissioner Calendar.
I know we have not asked the police department what the what they'd like to see in oversight. I think what we'd like to do is make recommendations around this for what should be included in the charter. I think we've heard some very dynamic presentations. Obviously, we have not updated our model since since the since the mid, early 90s. And so, what we are looking for is a model that works for the community and a model that makes sense for the city of San Jose.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Calendar. Any other questions for our guests this evening? Commissioner Segal.
I'm just wondering if anyone other than our Siobhan Nury, our independent auditor, not investigator, auditor, has to go through the mayor or the equivalent of the mayor or a city manager in order to get, in order to do your jobs? Is she unique in that, or do the rest of you have to do that as well?
The, you know, and we're unique at the Bart Citizen Review Board, but ultimately, our power comes from the Board of Directors for the Bart District. And so, ultimately, if there's a disagreement, it it gets it, it gets sent up to them for a for a general decision. Before that, it does hit the general manager's office, and so some things can go there. But that's, I think, what I would say is that there, there's a couple of different levels above us. But generally, as Russell said several times, we have very good access to specific information. But so, you know, it depends on what you're looking at. When it comes to political power, for example, with policy, or if there's a disagreement there, that can, that goes you know, sort of up through where we get our power from, which is ultimately from the board.
Here in Orange County, the Office of Independent Review is is very independent. My access is not predicated on any approval from County Council or the Board of Supervisors, which is the appointing body of my office. The power that I have to access information is delegated from the Board of Supervisors. There is state law. The the state constitution, in fact, lays out the power that the Board of Supervisors has in mandating the Sheriff's Department or other county agencies to open up their books for review. Read broadly, that government code section provides the Board of Supervisors and myself as a delegatee of their authority with with fairly broad access. In instances where there is a disagreement with myself and the agency head, whether that's the sheriff or another agency head, sort of all bets are off. There isn't all a referee or anything like that. But County Council, the County Chief Executive Officer, those folks play zero process. They have zero role in my investigations.
Wanted to also
In Oakland, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Alden.
Thanks. And opened our our laying back up just a little bit very briefly. You know, when we're talking about Orange County, Mr. Perez was talking about a a system in which his agency stands in the shoes of having attorney-client privilege and and being able to access information because they're considered counsel to the county. And that's a model you see in a number of places. Sonoma County has used that in the past, too, and they've made sure that the people, at least the head of the agency they hire is always an attorney for that reason. And that's certainly one one strategy. In Oakland, what we've done instead is is part of our charter, we've made it clear that CPRA and the Police Commission are part of the employer's mechanism for making employment decisions about the police officers. In this regard, we're what part of the California Penal Code would define as management of the police officers. And for that reason, we have the same access to all police records, just like, say, a chief of police would when assessing their subordinates or someone in human resources would at the city of Oakland, when they're helping the chief of police reach disciplinary decisions about officers or litigating their disciplinary decisions. And in the same way that, say, an arbitrator, who certainly isn't going to be an employee of the state of Oakland, would also have access to all that information. And so, because we've been made part of the employer's decision-making process, I want to remind people that ultimately, when a police officer works for a city, their employer is not the chief of police, it's the people of the city. That since we are standing in the shoes of the people of the city of Oakland and making those employment decisions about these police officers, we can access whatever we want directly. And so, for that reason, no one else brokers that access. We have direct access of the same sort that Mr. Bloom was talking about. So, for example, we can look directly at a body worn camera through the same server that police officers use when they want to look at body worn camera. We access police officers' personnel records using the same system that police officers at Internal Affairs use. And so, ours is what I would call a direct access model or an employer direct access model. And in that regard, no one brokers it. If in the very unlikely situation that we had a true dispute about who had access to what, we do have a subpoena power as well, and then we go to court to resolve the issue. But we have not needed to do that because we've had really excellent level of compliance.
Thank you so much. I had a second part to my question, which was, does anyone get redacted documents, or is that unique to our Siobhan Nury as well?
No redactions for us.
We don't have any redactions either. It's all unredacted.
In the, with regards to the Sheriff's Department, we don't receive any redactions. But we do have oversight authority over the probation department and the Social Services Agency, which raises certain concerns about youth privacy. And so, in those instances, information is redacted by state mandate.
Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, thank you to all all the presenters. Your presentations and the work that you're doing in your city, cities and county is and Bart Authority is all very, very welcome to be able to learn about what you're doing and try and figure out what we can do in our city. I wanted to ask Mr. Alden. And you sort of talked about this a little bit, but what if there hadn't been the the federal court oversight in the city of Oakland, would any of this have happened the way it, the way it is designed? So, in other words, for myself, I could say that you have a very powerful model in Oakland. But do you think it would have happened without the the federal court oversight and the issues that led up to that?
Well, I think that's very hard to know. As some of the other speakers have have mentioned, sometimes police oversight advances in a city only because of a scandal. And I think there's no question Oakland has has had more than its fair share of scandals in that regard. And whenever those have happened, usually we do see some advance in oversight here. But that said, you know, I would point out that the city of Oakland's had a really longstanding commitment to oversight. And long before there was this federal negotiated settlement agreement that allows the federal court to monitor the police department, we had a Police Review Board, a predecessor agency, really, to the agency I work for now. But like a lot of boards that were created in in the 70s and 80s, it had substantially less power, investigated far fewer cases. And it also had a narrower scope of authority, and its decisions were merely advisory. And the board to which that agency reported did not have nearly as many powers as the current commission does. So, I would say that, you know, oversight clearly existed before federal intervention, would have continued, you know, during federal intervention. So, I don't know that it was only because of federal intervention that we ended up having oversight. I think we really do have to give credit to a lot of people in the community here in Oakland that worked very, very hard to create our current oversight system and worked very closely with elected leaders to get it on the ballot and spent a lot of time studying the different ways in which oversight can be accomplished in Oakland, much as you're doing right now. So, you know, whether our our federal oversight, you know, causes to happen or not, I think that's a little harder to say. But I think without question, folks like you really digging in and getting to know what the options are, understanding what works best for your community, that's really the most essential part of making this kind of oversight happen.
Can you please follow up? Can you please describe? You you just mentioned the the very active involvement of the members of the Oakland community. Can you describe that a little bit more to us?
And Commissioner Fuentes, could you? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Alden.
Sure. You know, thank you. There were several different waves, you know, in that regard, when the original what used to be called the Citizen Police Review Board, our predecessor agency, the one I mentioned earlier, when that was founded, you know, that came forward because of community pressure after some really awful officer-involved shootings years ago. And it was, you know, in part because of that pressure, largely from the black community inside Oakland organizing around, you know, concepts of creating greater oversight in Oakland that we got that first model. The most recent set of reforms, Measure S1 and Measure LL, that I talked about earlier, got on the ballot in large part because our city council was working really hard on figuring out how to improve oversight after a really awful statutory rape scandal that we had with amongst the police department here. And so, there was, I think, strong community consensus around that at the time, that we needed a stronger oversight model. But in addition to that, one of the things that I think was an important part of the process was a group called the Coalition for Police Accountability here in Oakland. And they were a group that, they're still active, they are a group that reached out to a wide variety of interest groups, you know, neighborhood groups, specific community groups, groups that were organized around the Latino community, that were organized around survivors of police violence, that were organized around communities of faith in Oakland, and they brought And they brought all of these groups together into an umbrella group that really spent a lot of time working on figuring out what a ballot measure might look like and doing a lot of advocacy at city council about the specific models and how those might best move forward. And then the city council, to its credit, did a lot of study and considered several different models before choosing this one to put on the ballot. So it's, I don't know if that answers all your questions, but, you know, certainly if you're interested in meeting some people in a community that have done that work, the Coalition for Police Accountability in Oakland is one of the key ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuentes. Any other questions for our guests this evening? Seeing none, then I want to say thank you so much to our guests for coming, for speaking, for waiting, for questions, for being available, for your thorough presentations. And again, may, on behalf of our commission, also thank you for your service to your communities. Incredibly important work today in today's temperature and era, and we really appreciate your expertise and your public service. Thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to move us on to our next topic area, and that is the Native American land acknowledgement. And tonight, we have two guests. I'm going to start with our first guest, Karina Herrera-Laura, who is the Public Information Officer for the Santa Clara County Emergency Operations Center and Professor of Chicano and Chicano Studies at San Jose State University. I believe she's here. Karina, is there? Yes. Karina, welcome. And we have 30 minutes for your presentation this evening. I believe you're going to be joined by Herado Loera, as you might know from the Indian Health Center. So go ahead and get started, and then when he joins us, we can add him after your presentation. Thank you for joining us this evening. You are unmute. You unmuted yourself. Can you stop? We cannot hear you yet. It always happens this way, right? City Clerk, do you have any suggestions?
I was looking at- Testing, testing. Okay, we heard that. Okay, great. I had to disconnect from my other computer. All right, can you see me? Yes.
Yes, we can see you and we can hear you, so.
All right, thank you so much. So all I was saying was, my husband's actually going to join me somewhere or other. I'm assuming he's on. And we're going to do this as a collaborative effort. So if you see Herado Loera somewhere, if you can allow him in, I would appreciate it. He's in, great. Okay. So as he mentioned, my name is Karina Siwachmali Herrera-Loera. I have a couple of friends on here. Good to see you all. And then some new friends. And I'm happy to be here. I don't know if you all got a chance to look at some of the resources that were sent to you all, but I'm going to go ahead and play some, I think one of them was a very important video that kind of, you know, did a good job about putting this in together. I see my husband there, so I'm sure he's unmuting himself soon. But we're going to start off with an actual land acknowledgement. We've been blessed to be asked into several circles, several events, to start off with this land acknowledgement. So we wanted to do that here today with you all. Welcome, amor. Can we hear you?
Sound check, sound check. Can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me?
We can hear you. So I'm, I'm going to, what I have here is my poposkomi, which is where I hold my fire. And excuse the angle here. I had a video camera set up, but the audio wasn't working. So I'm just, I hold the fire in our calpulito nareke. I do Mexica Aztec dancing, traditional dancing in our community, and I'm one of the fire carriers for that. So my husband's going to lead us with that. I'm going to hold our sacred medicine here in my poposkomi. Amor, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Good evening, relatives. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, especially to talk about something that means so much to us as a family, as a community. Thank you, amor, for passing it over to me. And obviously, this is something that we do because this is a part of our indigenous tradition, the way that we're going to be doing it here, but it doesn't necessarily need to look like this. We will want to give you some insight as to what it looks like for us in the many different spaces that we've been invited to present in. And so here, normally I'm by her side. Unfortunately, we got moved up in the agenda, so I couldn't make it home in time to be by her, and so I'm tuning in from my office. So thank you all so much for your patience. But we'll take this sacred smoke here and offer it. Before we do so, we always say, you know, want to take a moment to acknowledge that we're gathered here upon the ancestral unceded homelands of the Moetmaaloney people. We stand in solidarity with them in their efforts towards federal recognition of the tribe once again. My wife here is going to offer some smoke towards the east. In our indigenous tradition, the east is the essence of masculinity. We take a moment to acknowledge the masculine energy of creation and that which lives in each and one of us. We're going to turn around and offer this smoke towards the west, a direction that has been set aside for the feminine essence of creation, the feminine essence of all things. Honor that which lives in each and one of us. She's going to turn around towards the north and offer this smoke here on behalf of our ancestors and the elders in our communities, that they're included, that they're seen, that their needs are met in all of the work that we do each and every day. My wife's going to turn here and face the south, the direction that we are reminded to think about our children and remember that all the things that we do are on behalf of our future generations, that their needs are met, that they are seen and heard. At this time, my wife's going to turn around, she's going to offer this smoke to all things that are above us, that beauty be all around us in every direction. She's going to turn again and offer the smoke on behalf of earth, that which provides for us unconditionally each and every day abundantly, as long as we're able to steward the land upon which we live in, in a good way. She's going to turn one more time, and in the seventh direction, the direction that is set aside for all of us, the inhabitants of this present moment right now, burn a little bit of medicine on behalf of all of us here, those things that are near and dear to our heart and that our needs too are met in a good way. And so, again, this is a part of our indigenous tradition, and essentially, on behalf of all indigenous peoples of the lands, land acknowledgements are a part of those traditions. I can't speak on behalf of all peoples, but all the different nations that I've come across from Alaska on down to El Salvador and beyond that, have that, take that time when we're in another people's land to acknowledge out of respect for all of the ancestors that inhabited that space before them, for their current generations, and on behalf of those that have yet to come. Thank you for your kind attention.
Now I'm going to share my screen here. Please give me a thumbs up if you see my screen. All right. So we're going to walk you through this brief presentation. We try to, you know, do it as best possible, you know, so that you can acknowledge. And maybe you've all, you know, you all know about land acknowledgements and do them all the time. Thank you so much. And maybe this is your first time, and anywhere you are is perfect. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I'm going to go ahead and introduce ourselves a little bit about what we do, both my husband and I. We're Chicanos descended of the Pueblo-Pome people and the Huarica Nations. Myself and my husband are active members of the local urban indigenous communities who work to reclaim, preserve, and perpetuate the traditional healing practices of our indigenous cultures on behalf of the past, present, and future generations, urban indigenous allies to the First Nations people of this land, the Moetmaaloney as well. Professionally, Herado is a Director of the Development and Communications for the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley. And myself, I'm a 15-year veteran of the Juvenile Probation Department as an officer, and I'm currently serving as a Public Information Officer with the Emergency Operations Center for our county. I'm also a professor at the Chicano and Chicano Studies at San Jose State University, and also serve the community as a board president for the Alamoakian Elementary School District. So I'm going to turn it over to my husband here to further talk about the land acknowledgement and what it is. You know, I know we did it, but the importance of it in our community. Amor.
Thank you. You know, the beautiful thing is that I grew up here in San Jose. My family comes from New Mexico on behalf of my maternal side, as my wife mentioned, from the Pueblo and the Mescalero-Pachi people. And from my father's side, we come from the northeastern region of Mexico in Nuevo León, descended of the Pome people. As part of relocation efforts of Native American families that has been a part of essentially efforts to assimilate Native American people into mainstream culture, there was a movement that relocated people from reservations throughout the nation into urban centers. And there's, San Jose happened to be one of the blessed places to be. We were blessed with that opportunity to provide a space for Native American people to be relocated to. I think it was a blessing on our behalf as far as the city goes, but it really posed a lot of challenges for American Indian people around understanding who they are and how it is that they were supposed to somehow get along in a city without any resources that were reflective of them or met their cultural needs, which is so central to a person's well-being. And so it's been beautiful to see our society grow since then. Lots of services have been put in place, including where it is that I currently get to do my work from, at the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley. And we've seen a lot of movement in the recent years. Like I said, I've grown up here in San Jose and seen a lot of growth. I'm really grateful for the services that were put in place. It gave me a place as an indigenous person where the intention initially was to assimilate our families, and it was doing a really good job of that. Fortunately, because services were put in place for us to reconnect with folks that had similar backgrounds and reestablish a connection to our roots, here we are. You know, community is built, tribal descendants from all kinds of different tribes have come together, really voicing their needs for services like that. And since then, the community has grown, established itself, and now it's like, as a collective, have been voicing their needs more and more in a more powerful way. And so here you see things happening in our community, not only here locally, but throughout the nation, where people are catching on and understanding that it's time to tell the truth about our history. You hear about ethnic studies in our schools, really wanting to take a moment to be honest about the land upon which we all continue to occupy, even as Native people were a part of an occupation of other people's land. And so it's important for us to acknowledge the ancestors of where it is that we reside. And for us, a simple way for people to do that is by merely taking a moment, that intentional moment, how powerful it is to be present in a moment and to acknowledge the land that we live on, the struggles that have been seen there in order for us to exist today and acknowledge the people, the First Nations people, and their current struggles like the Moetmaaloney people. And the more that we hear that in different spaces, I think it obviously does something for the institution, right, for whoever, whatever the audience is, to take that intentional moment. But even more importantly, the Moetmaaloney people are alive and well today. And it's really important for us to rewrite the narrative. In curriculum today, I've been, I don't know how many classrooms I've been in where there are, you know, I've been invited to come and talk about culture, and I look at some of the books at the reading, look at coloring sheets for little kids where the idea that indigenous people of these lands are only a thing of the past, that narrative continues to persist in our classrooms. So when we are on a stage or with an audience like virtually here tonight, and we take that moment to acknowledge that they are the ancestors, they are here today, and they're working for their future generations, it helps them to be seen and to rewrite that narrative that we are not only a thing of the past, but a thing of the present and working towards a better future for our next generations.
So here I just put down some facts, you know. Some of us like to go back in history, and some of us know these details. My grandfather was very good with dates and years and who was who and who was a governor and what they were doing. And some of us may have not even been alive. So just wanted to share some interesting facts about historical leaders that have done their best to right some of the wrongs and are committed to the Native Americans. So in 1914, Reverend Red Fox James traveled 4,000 miles to Washington DC to petition the president for a day to honor Native Americans. In 1968, California Governor Ronald Reagan designated the Fourth Friday in September as American Indian Day. In 1990, President George W. Bush designated November as a National American Indian Heritage Month. And now you all have a huge opportunity to do this, you know, in this process that you all have been given this opportunity to do so, you know, in this charter review. And we're honored to be here to present to you all and even bring, you know, this as a possibility. And we wanted to share a little bit about the Moetmaal culture, you know, as my husband was talking about, being relocated, right, from other, maybe states, other cities. But can you imagine, if you can just imagine, you know, being in your home and then being told, you know, you can no longer do your ceremonial dances, and maybe not being told, but not having the ceremonial space where you used to gather. And so these are some pictures of some of the ceremonial dances. And there was a, there was a roundhouse. If you all have the opportunity to look through the Moetmaaloney page, I didn't want to, you know, cut and paste everything and put it here, but I do invite you to go there, and you'll see a picture of a roundhouse, you know, which was a ceremonial sacred site, you know, where they would be able to go and do their ceremonies and have their cultural events, you know, where children were able to learn about their culture, you know, in the firsthand experience and not wait till, you know, a specific date or a month to honor their lives. This was a way of living for them. And so we also wanted to acknowledge that back in October of 2020, I think it was October 12, 2020, it might have been 2019, so excuse me, I might have gone the date wrong. No, it is 2020, sorry. God, this pandemic, it's almost like, did it happen, did it not happen? Where was 2020? So I wanted to read off this proclamation, and I'm very honored that some of you even here in this forum were there and actually signed this specifically landy. Thank you so much. But I did want to read this out loud, what the City of San Jose, you know, what this proclamation states. Whereas the Moetmaaloney have called our valley home for thousands of years before expeditions brought people of European descent to the Bay Area and comprised all of the known surviving Native Americans lineages aboriginal to the bay. And whereas specifically, they constituted the Tamian community in the Santa Clara Valley who have led land preservation and natural resource management practices in environmentally sensitive areas like the Mayan-Rumi-Coyote watershed. And whereas contrary to actions by federal government in the 1920s to erase the historical memory of the tribe, several hundred tribal descendants remain in the region and devoutly carry on the traditions of their ancestors. And whereas the Moetmaaloney, Amamutson, and Esalen tribes of our region have suffered severe injustices and disposition of, and we honor and support their descendants' efforts to revive their culture, language, and history. Now therefore, San Licardo Mayor of the City of San Jose, together with his colleagues on the city council on the 12th day of October 2020, do hereby recognize and proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate Native American history in our valley. So just wanted to, you know, take a moment and honor that. Several, you know, as we know, of the council members are still there, but in specifically wanted to thank- But in specifically wanted to thank Mr. Landy for supporting this proclamation on behalf of our Native American people.
If I could add to that just a little bit. Kind of circling back a little bit to the ceremonies and cultural practices of the Moakmal people and Native American people throughout our lands. If you can imagine, you know, in 1978, before 1978, all quote unquote, Native American ceremonial cultural practices were outlawed. It was illegal for Native American people to gather, to assemble. In contrast to the rest of the nation, it was illegal for us to gather ceremonially and demonstrate our ceremonial Native American cultural practices in public. 1978, American Indian Religious Freedom Act. What an amazing that again, actually as you know, efforts to distribute American Indian people off of reservations into cities actually had the reverse effect, you know, because they were separated, feeling isolated. They found others, they began organizing and actually as a result of a lot of civil protests came about this American Indian Religious Freedom Act, 1978, from that day forward. That wasn't that long ago that we were given the right to again, I mean, can you imagine for hundreds of years not being able to practice those things openly? Or if you are practicing, be fearful of doing so, being fearful of prosecution for doing so. And so you see a lot of tribes that are in the process of having to reclaim and in a lot of circumstances, having to recreate their cultural practices. And that in a lot of ways is reflective of what the tribes of this land have experienced, Moakmaloney in particular, loss of language, loss of cultural practice. And so, you know, we have a lot to do to reconcile, to bring about atonement between these institutions like the city of San Jose and the First Nations people of this land. And so it's just, you know, that's another reason why I think it's it's so important to do these things to help rewrite that narrative in a good way. And really, really proud of the city of San Jose and whomever brought about the movement to be able to set aside a day as Indigenous Peoples' Day, we actually had an opportunity to talk with Chairwoman Charlene Ishma from the Moakmaloney and Vice Chairwoman Monica Arriano. And we talked a little bit about that process and how we were happy that Sam Liccardo actually reached out to them and spoke with them about the language that was included in that proclamation. Always, always important to reach out to the people it is that you're trying your best to represent.
Thank you. So I'm going to end here with a video and then we're going to end with really what can we do? What can you do? What can we continue to do? So I'm going to end us with this video. Please, give me a thumbs up if you can see it and hear it.
We cannot hear it. We can see it, but we cannot hear it.
Yeah, I can see, oh, you'll need, you'll need to share audio. When you share your screen again, if you unshare and then share, click the lower left little box that says, share audio.
It's giving me flashbacks to all the ranked trading videos, the ranked trading videos we're trying to play.
Before I begin this morning, I'd like to recognize the Algonquin Nation on whose traditional territory we are gathering. We acknowledge them as the past, present and future caretakers of this land.
Wherever I go on that screen earth, I do the Lakota creation of acknowledging the four directions, land and the people living there. Chi Ma'ka, as I call grandmother of the earth, the land, I view her as a sacred, you know, living entity. And that's where we acknowledge it in Lakota thought and philosophy.
As a native person, I'm ready for any kind of confrontation that might come up. I'm preparing myself to remind people of all those things that they forget about. I was at a meeting in Minneapolis and the room was primarily non-native people. I was in a non-native organization. But this executive director got up and said, okay, we're going to get started. So everybody, you know, was sitting down and getting quiet. And she said, I'd like to get started by acknowledging the indigenous culture of this, of Minnesota. And I was like, first, I was like, whoa. And it just made everything like fall away a little bit for me. My guard went down. I was more relaxed. Because by saying that, like, that means she understands something that is just like, you can't talk about, right? There's just, it just relaxed me as a minority, as a woman and as a native person, like it just like, like pulled away this layer that's always there, you know, it was super cool.
We're at a time where non-native cultures are understanding the traditions of indigenous peoples for probably the first time in our histories. So like when I go to New Zealand, the protocol is to acknowledge each other's ancestors and your mountains and your rivers. And that's such a beautiful tradition. When people are in that space and say, we acknowledge who you are, this land, the way your people come from, they're saying, we acknowledge your relationship, but we're also creating that relationship. This is a good thing.
The important thing would be that folks would then sit with that, like what does it mean that our settlement is occupying this space? And what responsibility do I have considering that legacy to these contemporary things, right? And how do I stop distancing myself from that? Ideally, that would be for me, the impact that this has.
If you start acknowledging that the land that you're standing on and the space that you are in belong to people that are still here, like make so much more room for understanding of all these other issues. It's one of those little things that like, if it could just tip a little bit, all the like dominos that could fall from it, I think are important.
Now I'm like imagining it and like wanting to live in that, like the thing that I'm imagining, like, yeah, that's actually really beautiful.
Just being a genuine human being to acknowledge each other's histories, the good and the bad.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure, I know you all got the presentation, but wanted to make sure that, I know we get so busy, we run from work. So I want to make sure you have the time to view that. And so we want to end today really by, you know, really asking yourselves, right? How can you be an ally to the First Nations people of the city of San Jose, the Moakmaloney? And really the First Nations people of anywhere you go to. And you have the opportunity to include, you know, in the land, a land acknowledgement in the charter. And what an honor that is, you know, that your group is taking the time to review the charter on so many levels with so many things. Thank you for taking that time. I know as a public servant, we don't get that, you know, acknowledgement often. So thank you. And what we're asking, you know, of your charter is to really include and be creative, you know, and we were going to come today with a line, you know, to to recommend to, you know, your charter review here in the commission to start the charter. With that, we did talk to the chairwoman of the Moakmaloney. We didn't want to rush it. So we didn't want to just bring any line, you know, we really want to make sure that's something meaningful. Not just to Herado and I, of course, we would do our best, you know, we had ideas already written down, but to the Moakmaloney. And so they did say they will be here at, you know, the next time that there's an opportunity for them to speak. So we're looking forward to that and, you know, honored to be here. Herado, I don't know if you have any last closing words to close this off with, but I know that we'll be here for any questions or comments that you might have as well.
No, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Happy to be here on behalf of our family and all of those that we represent.
Thank you so much to both of you. Questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Fuentes.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Karina and Herado for being here with us today and for your presence and and everything that you shared with us. And I just want to mention that I actually happened to learn today. And maybe I knew about this in the past, but I don't know how many of us know that, and you know, when, if they do come, somebody from the Moakmaloney come to our meeting, we can ask them to, to explain what happened because and maybe, Herado, you and Karina, you can explain to us exactly what is a roundhouse. Because I don't, I personally don't know and I wouldn't be able to explain it, but I understand that there was a plan and already an agreement, I believe with the city to establish that where the, where today is the the shark, well, where the sharks play and that I don't know if it was a shark, so how it was that it was stopped, it was ended. But I think if we could just know what that was, the roundhouse, what that represents. And also I'm thinking that as a commission, we should become educated on that just to determine if there's anything that, that would have prevented that cancellation of of that agreement with the Moakmaloney Nation.
You know, briefly, a roundhouse is a traditional, typically it's a trip, it's a gathering space for ceremonial purposes, like traditionally. And it's roundhouse simply because that's essentially the shape of it. It's, you know, dome shaped, round. If you go to any of the other nations here, Homo people in the north, there's almost, it's interesting how similar a lot of the tribes' cultures are throughout California. But you'll see those traditional gathering spaces. And so that's what essentially what a roundhouse is. And thank you so much, Maya, for bringing that up. I didn't know that at some point there was an intention of creating a space like that. You know, unfortunately today, the Moakmaloney people, while there's over 500 members of the tribe, they do not have a land base of their own. And that's, you know, one of those reasons why you don't see those kinds of gathering spaces here in our local area.
Commissioner Matamora.
Thank you. Thank you very much to our speakers. Apologies, I'm not able to be on camera. But want to really appreciate your presentation and the fullness of it, including the opening with the land acknowledgement. You know, the presentation in the video as well. A couple of sort of very policy related questions. So one is the video, you know, briefly referred to some places where, where specific like public policy exists around land acknowledgements. And I'd love to know if you have more information about those models and recommendations on where to learn more about those models. You know, and sort of a sub-question is, you know, understanding that certain practices are recognized as religious practices, I'm assuming, right? Because you had referred to the the allowance of them. I can't believe they even had to be allowed, but the allowance of them in 1978 under Religious Freedom Act and just how how land acknowledgement policies have been able to happen without running into barriers of concerns about separation of church and state, if that question makes any sense.
I cannot start and then I'll hand it over to Herado to add anything. And so the only, or not the only, but one of the examples that I can think of locally is San Jose State University really taking taking the land acknowledgement piece seriously and starting, you know, all their, their events and spaces and meetings with the land acknowledgement. So I think locally, that's a first, you know, system, I guess, in place that I, I know that has done that here in San Jose on behalf of the Moakmaloney. And so they have a policy in place. I know there's several resources and in our, you know, preparation for this, we're like, how much is too much? You know, how much are they going to remember? So I'm happy to forward some of these resources and, and, you know, really amazing work that's being done nationwide. And like, you know, you mentioned in this video, they talk about policies and even have some of those examples of what that can look like, right? It doesn't mean the city of San Jose is going to take on exactly that. But what that possibly can look like, I'm happy to forward some of those examples and resources to this commission to further look into it. And then, you know, maybe even further talk about it when we come back, hopefully, you know, in the future. And I would like to add anything?
Thank you for addressing the portion of the question in regards to policy. I know that there are probably some good examples out there beyond that as well. I don't have any to share in the moment, but would be happy to help with some of that research and forward resources along those lines. In regard to, you had talked about separation of church and state and, you know, how is it that policies are written in regards to Native American culture and their ability to practice their religion. If I understood your question or point fully, I would have to say that, you know, American Indians, Alaskan natives have a very unique relationship with this government as First Nations people and understand that, you know, there were policies that were literally written in the spirit of extermination. You know, save the man, kill the Indian essentially was the essence of many policies that, you know, have been documented. There's, there's a long list of policy that was put in place specifically with the intention of exterminating American Indians. And obviously their rights to land in order for this, you know, the country in which we live in currently to be established. And so it's a very unique relationship. And so you'll see that, you know, obviously being able to take away American Indian rights to practice their culture and ceremonial ways of life. Which are not institutions like we might be used to as far as religion goes, but essentially integrated into a lifestyle was a part of that extermination process. If you take away a people's ability to believe in what they believe in, what really truly makes them who they are, their connection to their surroundings. And that's essentially like central to most indigenous ceremonial practices. Eventually, generationally, you'll have people looking for other ways and essentially having to assimilate. And so yeah, it's a very, very unique relationship of, you know, there's policy work going on all the time. I'm happy to work for an organization here who does state level, local and national level work to reverse some of those policies. And so I hope I've addressed your question to some degree at least.
Thank you. Commissioner Matamora, Santa Clara University also uses land acknowledgement as for a couple of years now. Is this another local example? I'm sure there's others. But definitely that would be a great resource. Karina, if you could share any resources with us. Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you. I was in conversation with San Jose State University. I had initially, before being lucky enough to find our distinguished speakers tonight, I had tried to invite them because they amended their charter, their university charter to include a sacred land acknowledgement. So, but ultimately they decided that only, you know, indigenous peoples should be speakers. So they declined. But just so we all know, their charter was amended, their university charter was amended to include a sacred land acknowledgement. And they worked specifically with the Moakmaloney peoples to get that language in, the specific language for their specific charter amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Any other questions for our guests? Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Any other questions for our guests? Seeing none, then I want to say thank you to both Karina and Harold for coming tonight and for your beautiful ceremony, helping us live the experience of this and not just talk about this. And this very important piece, and thank the subcommittee for putting this together for us. Thank you so much for your service to the community. And thank you for your time and energy here tonight. Any resources that you want to share with us, we'd be glad to disseminate to the full commission, which helps them in making decisions about recommendations we're making the city council. So thank you both for coming this evening and joining us and for your service. I am now going to move to our public comment on our speakers. This is a time when we will go to the members of the public to be able to speak on any item. But I see Attorney Vanny, your hands up.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify an issue of confusion with respect to what the IPA had presented with regard to the records that the IPA's office has access to. So I just want to clear up, clear up what's supposed to happen under the charter in the event that there's any confusion here. So just so everybody's clear, that the IPA has access to unredacted records when auditing a complaint of officer misconduct. So the IPA has access to the investigation files, the thoughts and impressions, things that would normally be confidential under the law, the IPA has access to that unredacted. The IPA also has access to unredacted records when involving officer-involved shootings or use of force with great bodily injury is defined under the charter. That was something that was implemented by Measure G. No complaint needs to be filed in order to gain access to those records. It is the other records where the IPA is making recommendations, but it's not tied to a citizen complaint, directly tied to a citizen complaint that's in the IPA's office or doesn't involve an officer-involved shooting or use of force with great bodily injury. Those are the type of records that have the the guidelines under Measure G that the IPA needs to follow. And lastly, there was some comment that the IPA has to go through the mayor. The mayor is not involved in the process. He's only involved in the process, the mayor is only involved in the process as other council members would be involved. So I just wanted to clarify that as the commission moves forward, just so that they know that it's not all records that are redacted to the IPA's office.
Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you. It's for Attorney Vanny. So the example, is this a correct example, Attorney Vanny? If there is, if a dog bites a person and somebody makes a complaint, this was what Siobhan had told us. She, and if she wants to look at the training of that dog or to see if there was a pattern with that dog, does this dog actually bite, like, more than just this one person that issues a complaint? That she then couldn't, does not have access to that. She would have to go to the mayor, to the city manager, and to you, and all three of you would have to approve that, approve any additional documents, and that's would be redacted. So to you, it might not be, you know, related or of the same case. It's very, very technical for a common person. Of course, if that dog bit somebody, we'd want to know if this is happening all the time or not. But that, those would be documents she wouldn't have access to. Is that, you've heard her give this example, is that right, Mark?
Well, if the IPA is making recommendations with regard to how police officers should handle dogs, and it's not tied to a complaint, it doesn't involve an incident, well, it wouldn't be an officer-involved shooting, but it wouldn't involve the use of great bodily injury to a specific complaint, then yes, the IPA would need to go through the requirements under the, under Measure G, meaning it would need to be part of a work plan, it would need to be tied to a recommendation and related to complaints that are in the IPA's office. The IPA, again, doesn't need to go through the mayor. The IPA goes through the city manager, chief of police, the city attorney's office, and if appropriate, the city council as a body before such a recommendation can be made. Again, it's tied to the recommendation function that the IPA's office has, not necessarily their audit function. And this isn't something that we've actually had to deal with. The IPA, if if Siobhan is on, could comment on this. But this is something as Measure G went into effect last year, and the IPA's recommendations are a year behind. We haven't yet run into a situation where where Measure G has has been implemented in this way or implicated in this way.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. And I'm sure we'll stay tuned for more discussions around that item because it's going to be really one of those items that we want to make sure that we're clear about as well as we especially when the recommendations start to come in. I'm going to, again, go to the public to thank you to the public for sticking with us these last couple of hours, listening to all the speakers and questions. And clerk can call the first speaker.
Paul Soto.
Yeah, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. So we don't get to comment on the study session? That gets lumped in with public comment. I'm looking for clarification.
Sir, you can speak to the study session. That's what this topic is about. So public comment on the study session.
No, that's not my my, these are two distinct comments, because I have a comment on the study session, and then I have a comment as a citizen. Not related to that.
Okay, to be clear, we have comments now on study session. As soon as we complete this, we'll have public open comments.
Got it. Perfect, 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 perfect. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Okay, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, that that was excellent. The conversation at this level with respect to the Moakma, I don't believe this happened ever, not at this level. And so I really want to thank you for for sharing this time and space with me because I'm a part of and connected to that forward-moving progress. And so I really want to thank, especially Commissioner Siegel, she's just that, thank you. Secondly, is the the issue that came up with Oakland. Oakland, you're doing some excellent work. Excellent work. But you guys got Ella Baker, you guys got Frankie Guzman over there, man. Frankie Guzman is my hero. You can tell him that. Hey Frankie, we heard about you over there in San Jose. You got some fans over there on board, because Frankie Guzman is, that dude is bad, okay? And and what what doesn't happen here, though, is that the level of conversation that that you brought to the table is that we can do anything we want. This is good. We want this for the public. Oh, the policy, excellent, yeah, let's put that in. But what they're not telling anybody here in San Jose is the fact that that has to go through the police officers' union filter. That is a political body. They're not concerned with, the chief can want it all day long. But it's going to go through them. And what they're doing is they're going to wait till we submit all of our stuff, right? And then and then the police officers' union is going to sit there, check it, check, nope, check, nope, check, nope, check, nope, aha, there, got you. That's what they're waiting for. And what I would like is a little bit of protection from that. A little bit of a wall to where, you know what, we need to center this right here, right now. And we need to talk about this because if you get the public to start passing policy, and then the police officers' union comes in and 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 castrates that and renders them impotent, it's going to fall in the psyche of the public, and they're going to feel like they're not exercising.
Caller 5140.
Well, the San Jose Police Department, they have to start with actually picking up the telephone when you call their department over issues. They don't ever pick up the telephone. You can't even get anything started. All they want to do is you send them an email, and then they send you a scripted email back. They 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 don't ever pick up their telephone. They'll transfer you to fax machines, they'll transfer you the numbers that have been disconnected. You cannot start with square one with that department. If you email them, a lot of times, they don't even get back to you. This is coming from a department that every time I'm driving around and they're driving around at night, they don't have their lights on. They can't pick up the phone, they can't turn the lights on in their squad car. How are you going to be able to do anything with this department? Chief Mata was on a town hall claiming that he wanted to provide great customer service. I want everybody who's listening, try to call the San Jose Police Department and talk to a live body that has some sort of authority, not a 3-1-1 clerk or whatever. Try to call somebody. You cannot do it. When they call you back, if they do, it comes up as spam risk, I swear to God, or like caller unknown. They don't want you to pick up the phone. They don't want their phone number to pop up on your phone because they're embarrassed. They don't have the answers. They don't want to answer. Matter of fact, they're too good, and you're never going to be able to fight these guys because they make a lot of money and their police union is very, very wealthy. They have a lot of money. They have all the lawyers, they have all the guns, they have all the, they have everything. You're going to fight a an organization where people are making a half a million dollars a year? Those people are going to protect that like you know.
Tessa Woodman-C.
Well, I am disgusted with this. I'm Tessa Woodman-C. I'm the president of the Garden Alameda Village Association. And, you know, I'm just disgusted with everything that goes on. You know, it's like, you know, it's all BS as far as I'm concerned, because, you know, this thing about climate change, you know, is giving short shrift, shift. And the thing that you're doing is what I call virtue signaling. Oh, we're going to talk about the Native American Indians, we're going to talk about Bart. I mean, it was like five, six things you talked about tonight. My head is rolling. I mean, we never got to resolve anything. You gave us such little time, too. You're just sugarcoating it. You're just, you know, everything is phony. It's like we're not dealing with anything. And now you're going to check little boxes, you checked off every every minority, every, you know, the environmental groups. And that really bothers me. When I think about the $150,000 that you spent, it was, it went to all the minority groups. There wasn't environmental groups, and then it all went on my shoulder. I had a support, and my husband had a support. And, you know, Magnolia, in her, in her little attempt to try to get it on the agenda, you know, bless her heart, she tried. But it was like, it's been, you know, like pulling teeth, and we didn't get anywhere. We never discussed it. You said, thank you very much, you know? And now, you know, behind some closed doors of these, what we call these other sessions, you know, we're not getting any traction, we're not doing anything. And it's just virtue signaling. You you can check boxes. And and we haven't done anything on climate change. I don't feel like I know anything that's happening. And and yet, you know, you're making it seem like, and I've been writing letters. And when I wrote my letter, I didn't get, you know, everything stopped. I said I wanted more time for climate change, for the climate crisis. We need a lot of time. I didn't get any reply back. I didn't get a whole meeting that stopped for me like the city manager did. Why? Why not? I wrote a letter. Why wasn't my letter treated with the same respect as the city manager, when I'm the public? And this is for the public.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. The same as Paul and caller 5140, I have fears that, you know, the future of the Charter Commission is going to return to to developer issues and strong mayor with developer issues. That's a very frightening concept to myself. You guys have been doing great work with community efforts and a community charter process. Good luck how to continue. We all can continue those good efforts. I wish this item was broken down into a public comment after each police item and after the Indian land items, Aloney land items. Yeah, it's a big meeting, a long meeting. I just wish there was more time for that. Oakland, the first, a very important concept in Oakland is with its new technology ordinance and ideas. They were the first in the country to start developing these practices with the ACLU. They kind of revamped their whole city government in some ways around this concept that everyday person of a community has the right to publicly ask what sort of technology is being placed in their neighborhood. That's an interesting concept to consider. It's kind of what Robert Brownstein was talking about with affordable housing ideas. If you just simply may, if you ask for those sort of proclamations of a of a city and a person, that's creating a future. And it's an important proclamation to make and important beginnings. With the Indian Trust ideas, how about the ideas of talking about equity and green sustainability in our local neighborhoods? And then how can that be talked about in terms of Aloney land issues? And then from there, put those, put that language into the charter. Thank you for your time. I got five seconds left. Hope we have time for public comment, and thank you if we do.
Alina Yin.
Evening, Commissioner. Thank you for tonight's meeting and to all the presenters this evening. I really appreciate it. I've been excited about this ever since I found out who was presenting. So on climate, I really appreciate all the work that was shared, and it looks like there is a robust template for us to follow. And I hope that we are able to, you know, either adopt some of the commission standards by the city of Honolulu as well as, you know, the the charter, like the Chicago Charter Climate into our charter and have that, you know, be the building blocks of how we address climate change. On land acknowledgements, there also seems to be a great template for us to follow by some of our own educational institutions and others. And, you know, this could also tie back into climate, where, you know, if we could prioritize bringing in the Moakma Aloney people who have a long history and knowledge of the stewardship of this land into our climate strategy practices and how we approach that. On police, it is, it's evident that there is a lot of new best practices as presented. San Jose has a lot of room for improvement for us to follow. And, you know, mentioned by previous speakers, this was a lot to cover, and I definitely wish we had more time to respond. Two minutes for six presentations is is not the most time. And also to mention what Blair had brought up several times, which is, you know, surveillance and how that ties into public safety and how we need to also be addressing how surveillance is used within our community, how it impacts communities of color, and how we can be brought more into the conversation about privacy and how we can create a more safe community for everybody, including all of these new technologies that are being used to to serve us and to provide information. And
Roland.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So lots of presentations, lots of material, lots to think about. But I just want to bring to your attention a couple of things that raised red flags to me. You had this extensive discussion about Oakland, and there was a discussion about the police commission potentially having some kind of role into basically the police budget. And if you read the news yesterday, Oakland announced they are at 102 homicides right now, which is the same as last year. In other words, if they carry on like this, they'll have 33% more homicides than it is last year. San Jose, on the other side, is having that 24, 25, is about quarter of that. And you've got to remember, approximately 10 of these homicides were a result of what happened at the VTA. Back when the budget was passed, there were lots of discussions, and the council were accused of, you know, basically reducing the police budget. But the fact is that at the end of the day, whether it increased or it decreased in dollar amounts, the police budget dropped to 18% of the city's budget, versus 20% last year. And and the police chief came back the next day and said, look, this city is going to be unsafe. And here we are, down the road, homicides are up 33%. Let me close up with what the latest news are from Oakland. The residents are about to take the matter into their own hands. And I really don't think that the city of San Jose want to go there. So my advice to you in closing, please tread carefully with this. Thank you.
Back to the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Siegel, you had your hand up, or did you want to take it down? I'm not sure.
Hand is down.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Okay, now, Mr. Sweetran.
Actually, just a quick request. I don't know if it goes to the committee, Commissioner Siegel or staff, but I was actually just trying to find the San Jose State University Charter. And I wasn't able to locate that. And so I'm wondering if that's something that we can give help with, that we can see an example of what the land acknowledgement looks like in a document like that.
I will contact my contact at San Jose State. And I guess get to back to the chair, since I can't contact you directly. Is that right, Chair Ferrer?
I would just send it to Megan so she can I would just send it to Megan so she can put it with our packet, so she can get it out to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. And any resources that should come from any of our speakers tonight, if they could do that as well, that'd be great. Okay, before I go back to the public for comments off the agenda, just want to remind the public, this is a study session. So the commission is taking on a lot of different issues, listening to experts, other practices from other communities. It's part of the way that this commission is being informed. So tonight's a study session. No decisions are being made. The subcommittee will then go back, study more, give more, and then they'll bring their presentation of recommendations. The subcommittee's recommendations will be heard in public with plenty of time for discussion. And there'll be another full public hearing on their recommendations. So nothing has been decided on any of these issues. This is a study session, so I want to make sure we're super clear that a study session is not decision-making. The subcommittees are doing their background homework for them to make their presentations in public. Their recommendations go to a public hearing on each of the recommendations. And then there's going to be a public hearing separate for the recommendations of this committee. Okay, I'm going to go back to the public now and hear the public on any item, not on our agenda tonight, so not about the study session, but other things that you want to bring to the attention of this commission. Clerk can call the first speaker.
Paul Soto.
Yeah, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Once again, I want to really thank you for, for participating in this process, you know, and I feel that connection. I don't know, like, really, any of you, but I feel that connection that we are both, we're civically engaged. We care about our community. We feel a responsibility to our elders that came before us that set the stage and set the tone in terms of what their expectations are. And then we also speak on behalf of our ancestors. I, too, am a registered California native mission. I come from the Mission San Diego and I'm a Comyee. And so I was the first persons that had, that had experienced colonization in 1769 when they started instituting Mission San Diego. And so these issues are very, very personal and very relevant to the time. What I was extremely disappointed for, and I was hopeful, and I mean that sincerely, is that I was hopeful that there would be a European, a Caucasian member of this community right here that would have said something, anything, even just thank you for the presentation. But no. Clyde Arbuckle, in his history of San Jose, in his being, that this, he is the authority, he is the authority on San Jose history. They've locked onto that and they will not let go. You think a pit bull is tenacious when he's got a chihuahua in his mouth? You have never, ever experienced a California pioneer there, never. I have some authoritative documents, thank you for suggesting that, Commissioner Ferrer, because I have some authoritative documents that I was able to successfully use to give the city so that they can make an informed decision with respect to the felony statute. Two days later, the mayor ordered it removed. So there's legitimacy to these histories in terms of California history because the documents that I have were produced by California itself from paperwork from their own archives. And so.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the meeting tonight. Thanks for the words of, from previous public comment of the person. She described, you know, the Aloney Land Trust issues in very interesting terms and kind of what I tried to explain. And it sounds like something can very much work very interesting in the next few months. Good luck in your efforts with this. To mention, she also mentioned the ideas of technology that I felt, you know, I've taken approach, you know, that, she described it very well, that I really wish that technology oversight could be more a major part of the future of the city charter. What it can offer and ideas of a future of open democracy, I think, is incredible. And I think you probably know my feelings about that by now. And I tend to try to take a more tact to just talk about the importance of open democracy in our upcoming decade and decades. That can be helpful. I really hope you can look into the ACLU Surveillance Technology Ordinance. It can give you really good guidelines, how to, you know, create a charter process itself, the language for it. It's guidelines for our future about responsibility, open democracy. That's, it's important stuff that I hope, yeah, it can have an important effect in your decision-making, how you'll be making decisions about our future and what is openness and what is community connecting with each other? That's what it does really well amongst a number of things. A thank you to Paul Soto that we are trying to consider, you know, the initial guidelines of people like Blanca Alvarado, who I think has had a really good part in what we're talking about and working towards, and her own good guidelines about how we address the future of this charter process. And thank you for your efforts today at this time. Thanks.
Caller 5140.
Yeah, once again, the police department, they need to pick up their telephone. They need to provide good customer service. They need to drive with their lights on when it's dark out. You know, I called the city of Oakland because they had the highway patrol come in to patrol International Boulevard. Why? Because that allowed their department more time to investigate and prevent the crimes against Asian-American people. I called them on a Friday night at nine o'clock at night. I had a guy, you know, very politely explain everything to me. I've never had anybody from San Jose PD do that. They're too snotty and smug, they make a lot of money, they're in a lot, they have a lot of power, and now all of a sudden, they're seeing that at my road and they're freaking out. Secondly, this was ridiculous that we couldn't have public comment. That's a weak excuse the guy gave. But I also want to say that Native American people need to tell the people of today what they did do back in those days. They had great flood prevention, they knew not to build near flood sites. They also had controlled burnings and they could build baskets with their weaving techniques that could hold a lot of water to put out fires. Imagine they had no, you know, modern machinery, very primitive, but man, they knew how to do the work and do the job. And I think that I would like to hear Native American people talk more about things that they did for, you know, everyday living that could, that could benefit us. And I hear a lot about, talk about culture and statue removal. I don't need to hear about that. I don't want to hear what those guys did that was good. I know what they did because I've read about, I've read many books about the Native American people.
Tessa Woodman-C. Tessa.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, why does it keep running? It shouldn't start running until I start. Could you please start it over? Thank you very much. Good. Anyway, you won't. And, you know, the thing is, nobody's there. That is the real truth. Nobody is there and none of you are listening. That is really the truth. And, you know, I try to reach you because I fell over on my bicycle because you had a big puddle in the bike lane by the farmer's market that you moved. You know, these are problems. And this is just an example, that I was on the phone for two hours before I could reach anybody. Nobody answers the phone. You know what they say? Oh, this is Google, you know, let us, let, Google subscriber would like to know who's calling. Oh, it's you, Tessa Woodman-C. Oh, he won't answer you, we'll call you back. Nobody calls you back. I mean, it's just what, you know, Michael Salini says about the police. I didn't say your name right, but you get the gist, 5140, whatever his number is, you know? And so, you know, he's right, you know, nobody's calling back, you know? And it's just the way it is. People aren't doing their job very well. And this whole thing with, you know, this is all very much virtue signaling, very phony. This is what's been happening. Every meeting I go to, six of them that we had to address, you give us two minutes to address and you're not giving us enough time. Why shouldn't we be addressing each item? You know, that's the way it's supposed to be. It's an agenda item each part, but you, you put them all together and I, and I couldn't even follow anything anymore. We have a climate crisis, that's a big issue. You know, we have to do something. We can't just check it off in a box and go on as business as usual. This is critical. We're going, going extinct. It's called existential. And along with all the other six million, we're having the six mass great extinction, six mass extinction right now. And our fossil fuel usage is going up. We're going to eight degrees C above pre-industrial. That's where we're headed and nobody's talking about it, nobody's changing. And, you know, you give it this, you know, a little time that we have to talk. We need to be like Alameda, that they, they say the people run their city. We need the people to run our city.
Back to the commission.
Thank you. And I want to thank again this subcommittee for arranging all the speakers tonight. Thanks to all the commissioners for being here tonight, for your attention. I adjourned us to our October 4th meeting, 2021, at 5:30. We'll be back in regular session and picking up from our last agenda. Thank you all and have a good evening.